Mr. Slack, if you can lead us.
It's been a pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilman.
Here.
Councilman Sackta. Mayor Simmons. Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson. Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Yeah, I understand Peter and Mike are going to be here in a little while. Public comment? On agenda items only, please. Seeing none. Oh. Sure, if it's on any, if it's on agenda items, you can speak now, or you can do it later. Okay.
Deputy Mayor. Councilman. Councilwoman. My name is John West. And I'd like to talk about something you were discussing at the last meeting concerning going around after a storm and assessing any needs that people may have. And it occurred to me that it was odd that no mention was made of the fire department helping in this regard. And Greg kept very quiet about that. And I wondered why. I mean, the fire department is ideally situated in various parts of the city, and they have the transport and they have the people. And I don't understand why he didn't put his hand up and say, "We'll do it next time." But that's just a thought. You must have a reason for it. And I don't know the reason for it, but...
Do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, the biggest reason for it is, is once, and Carl will attest to it because he was there, in the EOC at 40 miles an hour, all emergency operations from the sheriff's office to the emergency medical services EMS and the fire department cease to go. Forty miles an hour sustained winds, we do not go outside. So with that, we start stacking calls. That doesn't mean 911 stops working. We continually receive calls. We write them down, we prioritize them. Then once the winds subside below the 40, we go out and start answering those emergency calls. On that 24-hour period, I think we were right at 112 calls behind before it's, before we even got out of the chute. So not only do we still do, have to do those 112, 125, somewhere around there, we still had to answer subsequent calls after that. So we prioritize it, like if it's, you know, I've fallen or a tree's in front of my garage door, we may not get to you because there may be someone with a heart attack fast. So that's what we do is we prioritize. So for that first, like I said, the staff will can tell you, the first probably 24 to 48 hours after the storm, we're playing catch-up.
I understand. I didn't mean you to go out in the middle of the storm.
No, I understand, no, but we don't. That's just so everybody knows that. That is a Lee County hurricane standard. Everybody in Lee County, once winds hit sustained 40 miles an hour, nobody goes out unless, it's one of those risk benefits, we risk a lot to save a lot. Like if someone's in dire straits, having an active heart attack or something like that, we can get it. We can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're right.
Sure.
I just want to add to that. I know that we had a problem at Vanderbilt Lakes, that one street, the trees were just covering the whole place. There was no way a fire department could get through there at all. So, and the fire department was there cutting the tree down. So that's what you do.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Weeks.
Hi, guys. How are you doing?
Good.
I just feel, I feel Jim Weeks, Horse Weeks, and the Weeks Fish Camp, I just thought I should add to it that when the storm came through at Weeks Fish Camp where we live down there, it was Wilma. The fire department was the first people down there cutting the trees so we had access in and out of the fish camp. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else for a public comment? Seeing none. Patty, are you? No? Okay. So our first agenda item is a report from Mr. Beaver. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Council. And I'm going to be doing a PowerPoint presentation here. What I'd like to do is do the presentation and then take all questions later. And we can go back to a slide if there's a need to look at a particular thing in response to a question. So tonight, I'm going to be giving you an interim report on the city of Bonita Springs' flood reduction project. This is actually not going to be the full, it's not the final thing. That comes in December. But this lets you know where we are right now and what progress we've made in a number of areas. So we were employed by y'all to look at proposals to reduce flooding in Bonita Springs suitable for legislative funding, for restoration of functional hydrology, and improve water quality and habitat. Includes the entire city, the Imperial River, the Spring Creek, and the coastal systems, as well as the smaller tributary streams to those larger flowways. This is the scheduled performance. It's basically a three-to-four month project. We're almost at the first month. That won't happen until we get to November 4. But we're making progress, and we've completed tasks one and two. And we've also done the first deliverable with y'all, which is your candidate legislative agenda for bringing to the Florida Legislature this session. It's an important point about this project for everyone to understand, particularly the public. The goal is to achieve flooded reduction throughout the city. It's not a total flood elimination project. No one can guarantee the elimination of all flooding under all potential future conditions. And no one should expect that they have a road or a building located in a distinct, in an existing unmodified floodplain, set at ground level elevation, that they will not be flooded when that floodplain floods. So you've got to do something if you wanted to prevent flooding in the floodplain. You just can't live in the floodplain and expect that nothing's going to happen. So there's some basic predicate conditions associated with dealing with flooding in southwest Florida in Bonita Springs. First, we are very flat. You don't have topography elevation, you don't have places to build a dam or a reservoir. You can't tuck water away in your topography. It's going to be there on your surface, and particularly if the main cause of the flooding, which was in these events, was precipitation over the entire area. Okay, we are subtropical. We're not tropical, we're not temperate. And that really affects our flooding patterns and why we get floods, because our climate is more like India with a monsoon season than it is like Brazil or it is like the upper Midwest. And a lot of people come here from other places, and they do not expect that you're living in a place that's going to be like India or the Great Plains of Africa in terms of having these heavy-duty rain seasons and then prolonged droughts. And both of these cause problem for people here who, because in particular, people want to get rid of the water when it's raining, and they want it back when it's a drought. And there's not a lot of ways to store water in a flat landscape. Now, this is important. Sheet flow is a normal natural path of gradual broad flood delivery of precipitation driven freshwater to streams and estuaries. This was a natural way it happened in Florida. It still happens in a number of locations here. The Everglades operates this way, the Big Cypress, and your communities, it's operating this way, where there haven't been blocks to sheet flow, collecting and concentrating the water flows into drainage ditches and canals. Collecting that water into drainage ditches and canals is part of what creates flooding. Because what would be inches of water on a landscape that would not cover roads, that would not go in the houses, instead goes into packets which are delivered very quickly, and the plan is to get it off the landscape as rapidly as possible. So when you put something into a canal at the headwaters of the Imperial River, and all these canals at the headwaters of the Imperial River gather into one outlet, it then gets to the point where that'll stack up and exceed its banks and go out into the floodplain. If we let sheet flow not be impeded, you would basically see a more gradual delivery of water. A lot of it would soak into the soil. A lot of it would be evaporated. But instead, the plan has been and continues to be in Florida for more than the past 100 years, to try to throw the water off into the estuary as quickly as possible. And the problem is for your community, you are at the base of a giant funnel. All the things that are in the upper watersheds and watersheds that have been connected to your community are trying to get through a narrow spout end, and that's typically the Imperial River, in some cases, the Spring Creek. Contrary to some past media statements, you see this on the local TV, sheet flow does not cause flooding. And there is no deadly sheet flow. You know, people are not being killed by water as high as their ankles. Okay. Even in our least impacted future, we're having climate change. In fact, we are in climate change right now, and this is going to affect what's happening to you. It can be well argued that what recently happened to Bonita Springs is in part the result of climate change accumulations to more severe storms. We're seeing increased climate instability, increased coastal erosion, continuous sea level rise. The sea level in Bonita Springs area has risen eight to nine inches in the last 116 years. That is a measured fact from NOAA. You have wetter wet seasons, and that's what you've experienced. In fact, we have another storm coming this weekend that's going to be moving up from Nicaragua. I don't, may not get a name, but it's going to deliver probably about two inches of rain to you. Dryer dry seasons. Our droughts are going more prolonged, and they're being drier, not just because of the climate, but because human demand for water is drawing down what reserves there are, draining the aquifers downward in order to supply water when people want it in the winter. We're having more extreme hot and cold events. Your plants and animals are shifting, things are getting somewhat more tropical. We will eventually become tropical rather than subtropical. There are increased tropical diseases in plant, wildlife, and humans. You're going to see harmful algae blooms, I expect, toward the end of this year, as the nutrients will be flushed out into the estuaries by various human and natural-caused drainage helps the red tide get started. This causes increased strains upon your infrastructure and increases your uncertainty in variable risk assessment with uncertain actuarial futures. And what that means, basically, is insurance rates go up. So here's the elevation map of Bonita Springs in LiDAR. It's a satellite-derived elevation. You see, basically, at the base of the system here, the Imperial River flowway and the passages through here, these are the drain systems. Here's Spring Creek. Both of these have their origins in the Greater Interior Wetland Systems and the DRGR. They want to flow, the pattern of flow wants to go from northeast to southwest until it hits a catchment like one of these streams. This is what happens with your five-year floodplain in your city. So during a five-year flood, which you expect to occur in some frequency about that, these are the areas where you'd expect some standing water on the landscape. Not necessarily harmful flooding, but water standing on the landscape. Your 25-year flood, this is planned for with regard to the Water Management District standards. Now, the water slough systems that you have here have actually been altered by humans. The Imperial River watershed, which extends up through this part of the interior, has also had water that used to go down to Spring Creek diverted down into it, and some water that used to go into Aster River diverted down into it. And water that used to go south into Collier County in the Coquahatchie River blocked. So basically, the Imperial River watershed's now being asked to pass water from parts of three other watersheds as well as its own. The major flowway systems are shown here, and the areas in red were flowways that have been eliminated through a combination of development actions. So you see, you had a flowway up here that once fed in to Halfway Creek. This was blocked and eliminated by I-75. You had flowways here who went into the Spring Creek system. Flowways here where the mine is constructed, and through here that fed into the Imperial River. Similarly, there's locations, as identified in the previous Spring Creek Restoration Plan, where one of the branches of Spring Creek has been cut off by the interstate and not having sufficient culverting in that location. Even where culverts are present, they're often undersized, and the invert, the elevation at which they're set, is higher than it should be for the system to flow like a creek. So these are some basic problems that have happened with regard to both development in a number of areas, industrial, residential, agricultural, and road construction. Now, the storm event that we had on the 24th and 27th, I want to give credit here to the Pelican Landing Community Association, who shared this information with me, with work that was done by Barakun Associates and Wesley Kane. And you hear that it was putting down 11.23 inches of rain over that four-day period. This exceeded that 25-year, three-day rainfall that I showed you earlier. And it wasn't a named storm, but it actually was associated in part with the weather patterns that went with the Hurricane Harvey. Irma came in again, and very quickly behind that, with 10.11 inches of rain in 24 hours. This exceeds the 100-year, one-day rainfall standard. So you had an epic storm. This is, this is not something that was planned for in the Water Management District, Surface Water Management Systems. It's not a standard to which things are designed. And so you would expect that the things that were there on the landscape, even in the most modern developments, would be exceeded in their performance in an event like that. The two together create a synergy. And so your heavily saturated landscape that was already flowing high then had this stacked upon it. Now, this again is coming from the Pelican Landing Community Association's documents. The stormwater management system in southwest Florida, the minimum road elevations are set at that five-year storm. The 10-year storm is your level of service for discharges. Your perimeter berm elevation's at 25-year. Your finished floor elevations are supposed to be at 100-year, but you exceeded all of that. So it is no small wonder that your roads flooded, well, your stormwater systems flooded, the roads flooded, golf courses flooded, and houses, in some cases, were flooded. And many, to a large extent, you were lucky that in many systems, they outperformed what their design was supposed to be. And then some communities, like Pelican Landing, they had emergency slough releases which helped them avoid the more severe aspects of this. Now, basin control elevations are established on a wet season water table. The level discharge rates are best on historic conditions for that basin. They're contained, the stormwater is contained within the basins up to the perimeter berm elevation, and then discharged through control structures. The volume is considered storage in the lake, and the stormwater management system is actually designed so it's expected under the most extreme events, like a 100-year storm. The roadways provide storage on those more extreme events. And so this is something that's become very clear as I looked at the newer communities, particularly the ones south of Bonita Beach Road, that what happened there was everything happened as it was designed. People should expect in a 100-year storm event overage that their streets are not going to be passable until the system begins to drain down sufficiently. And if the rate of water input exceeds the rate of water outflow outlet, it's going to stand for a while. Now, basic problems with this is the historic period of record for discharge rates doesn't account for climate change. The drier conditions of the past are being used to plan today in what's going to be a wetter future. Control structure size and inverts don't account for climate change considerations either. And so they're made to that historic period, but not toward what the future events are going to be. And the pond, lake, borrow pits, golf courses, and road systems are expected to provide flood storage during these extreme storm events. So if we go with the existing standards that are available and are the basis of review for the South Florida Water Management System, this will continue to happen into the future, even in the best-planned stormwater management system communities. That's an important thing to think about. So when you bring up communities here, and you have quite a few that don't have the most modern system, even if you take it to the modern system, you will still typically expect some street flooding into the future. So projects we've already started in this past month, the Spring Creek shold dredging was already going on from the Spring Creek Restoration Plan. That's been permanent and advancing, and will begin to be implemented soon. The NOAA grant for Spring Creek culvert improvements on the CSX Railroad and Malagro Road, that has been put together for an application to NOAA. These are two projects that were identified in the Spring Creek Restoration Plan. The Bloomberg Grant that I was here last week to talk about, and what's called Taking Back the Watersheds, in which we're going to examine how we can put the water back into the watersheds they belong in. Atkins has been selected as an engineering firm to insist in the Flood Reduction Plan Technical Engineering Assistance, that's later on your agenda today. And the list of legislative initiative funding projects from next upcoming session have been put together. And then these are them, which involves the inspection of the whole system, removing snags and clearing the system, replacement of crush and/or substandard culvert conveyance in all flowways, including residential yard conveyances. And do the land acquisition for more retention in the DRGR for a regional-scale retention treatment system, and at smaller scales along the course of the Imperial River and Spring Creek. The target projects in the C-2020, the Lee County Master Mitigation Plan, the Southwest Florida Watershed Study, partnered with adjacent jurisdictions and NGOs, and Pine Lake Preserve Conveyance and Restoration. There are right now surplus lands that the South Florida Water Management District has that meet these criteria, that they're planning to put up to public auction. I think your city should basically talk to the Water Management District and say, "You want those lands. You want those properties that are in a floodplain in the DRGR," so that they will be able to be retained for water retention and holding water on them, rather than be developed and throwing water off into the Imperial River. And we'll construct the Logan Boulevard and other potential conveyance systems from Bonita Beach Road south to the Coquahatchie River system. And this would begin to address some of the problems of water from other watersheds going into the Imperial River and putting them back where they belong. Understand that we are not going to try to put more water into the Coquahatchie than should be going there. So you don't solve your problem by throwing your water off onto some other person who then has a flooding problem, who then needs a study to solve it. So the potential flood reduction solutions we looked at can be short-term and implemented or started in this year and are relatively immediate. They can be moderate term, already planned and ready for funding, for design and build, or longer term, with planning needed for two-to-five-year timeframe, depending on how complex the thing we're talking about's going to be. Also, we're going to recommend ongoing and paradigm-changing activities into the foreseeable future. This includes changes in your building codes, your land use plans, and putting climate change adaptation into your engineering for things like roads, critical facilities, and your future developments. I'm now going to tell you about some potential solutions already identified, and we're examining and going to put together and cost out for you. Remove the implements to flow within the existing system. There's a wide varieties, includes debris, sediments, and trash that's accumulated and is storm-related. Some of your culvert systems are silted up rather substantially. Other ones are heavily vegetated, lee-blocked. And some of the projects we've already started, like the CSX Railroad culverts is an example of this. We'll evaluate existing constrictions of flow in the system, including lack of drainage features. I was very surprised to go to some of the community's hardest-hit to find they have no drainage features whatsoever. There's no side, there's no side swales, there's no culverts. The community is basically flat at the floodplain elevation. There's no positive way for water to drain off the landscape once it's precipitated on. That's an example of one of those places. So we want to look at small culverts, culverts with inverts that are set too high, we need to adjust those to put the inverts to where they belong. Causeways construct across floodplains for a number of your crossings of your waterways and water bodies. You have fill going into the floodplain of the water body before a smaller bridge is built. The idea would be then to pull back those causeways and span the whole floodplain, so that way there's not a constriction. If you have those constrictions, you get backwater flooding into the area that's upstream of it. This is both occurring on Spring Creek and on the Imperial River. And there are also, we observed, intrusions in the floodplain that appear to be unpermitted. You know, people just decided, "It's back there, I want to put something there." And locations where variances have allowed intrusion into the floodplains in the past, decisions were made potentially when this area was Lee County, where you've literally put structures into what's the active floodplain. Okay, partial solution two. Replace the substandard culverts and bridges with new structures of increased size, construct inverts, and design the plan for future sea level rise and increased future storm surge. So don't just design it for the flow we just had, but design it for the future fact that the water base of the river's going to be higher. Also, where possible and feasible, replace multiple culverts with open span of box culverts or a bridge. Where you have a series of round culverts, often set at the minimum engineering standard, that's not going to help you when a flood builds. That's just for standard operation. So if you can have a wide-open excess of passage, that can let your water go through quicker. And these have worked very effectively in other projects I've worked on. This improves the flow, and it can actually increase your recreational navigability if you do a bridge or a box culvert that someone can kayak or take a canoe through. Repair the damage and degrade and vandalize permitted dikes and berms. As I toured around your community, I found places where there was supposed to be a continuous berm around the edge of a neighborhood, and people had just taken out pieces of the berm. It's not clear why that was done, whether it was just to get over to the other side, whether they wanted to fill, whether it had been an accident, like a car accident, and the berm was never replaced. But there's a number of places like that, and particularly east of I-75, in your DRGR area where this has happened. Potential solution three. Retrofit your older communities that lack any true surface water management system to have a basic system of swales, with collection and stormwater retention systems of points or points of positive discharge to a larger receiving flowway. These systems don't need to be restricted to a single-name neighborhood, but probably will be best constructed by putting several adjacent neighborhoods together to feed into a regional stormwater collection system. Where you've got an older community, that's one of the most long-term communities here in Bonita Springs, there's probably not room for stormwater ponds or places to put the water. But you may have an adjacent property where you could drain to into a stormwater pond that's have got a capacity that handles the drainage for a whole street or several streets of that community. These regional stormwater treatment facilities have been used effectively for retrofitting. You want to see some examples of them, they exist in downtown Fort Myers, a number of places. And sometimes where they've had the situation where they don't have a surface area, they've used a barrier, buried water-holding tank as their place to put the stormwater into. Potential solution four. Correct the flows in the watersheds east of I-75 into a very large regional stormwater management system, with associate filter marsh, water quality treatment location in the eastern area of the Bonita Springs DRGR, on the mine lands and adjacent agricultural lands. This would be the biggest project besides the conveyance ways down to the Coquahatchie that's being recommended at this time. Essentially, you're looking at almost a mile of stormwater treatment area to capture the flows which are coming into your GRGR, and to move flows that are in Citrus Park and other locations east of the interstate, north of Bonita Beach Road, into these areas to hold the water, treat it, and gradually release it into the flowways which then go into their proper location, either Spring Creek or the Imperial River, after the flooding events complete it. These large-scale regional stormwater treatment systems have been very effective in other parts of the state. The Philippi Creek one is called the Selry Fields up in Sarasota County. There are smaller versions of these filter marshes at Freedom Park down in Collier County. The Ten Mile Canal System, I'll be talking a little bit about that type of design. But in terms of overall capacity, I'm talking about essentially large reservoir areas, but not with high berm dike systems, but large reservoir areas to receive and hold stormwater rather than have it immediately flow down the Imperial River. This is one of those projects that we're definitely going to need Atkins to help put together your cost design for. But it's, I've worked on these before, also up in the Tampa Bay region, they're very effective once properly designed and implemented. implemented. So, we need to change the design of Keel Canal, which is basically designed to be a straight shot and get the water off the land and into the Imperial River as quickly as possible system, to retain and treat more water rather than quickly discharge it. This can do, use adjacent water storage features to collect flows from the canal and hold it, and then redischarge back to the canal after your storm event's over. There's an example of this in several places, the Ten Mile Canal Filter Marsh in Lee County, the North Colonial Waterway, which is even more water-capable of holding. They actually take water out of the waterway into borrow pits on the side of the system. And of course, the Freedom Park Filter Marsh. You can also install a series of step-up weirs to hold additional water within the Keel Canal. Right now, you've got the main canal at the part that connects to the Imperial River. But you could step up water on the landscape as elevation provides you to hold more water in before it gets down into the Imperial River. It's not going to be as pronounced as the step-ups like on the Kalusahatchee River, but there's an opportunity for this. This could aid in storage and provide improved groundwater levels during your dry season. So, this could help you not just with your flood reduction, but with your increased drought Reconnect, potential solution six. Reconnect and/or improve the connection of the upper watersheds of Halfway Creek, Spring Creek, and Coahatchee. We've talked about this before. The Bloomberg Grant application's the beginning for this. The reconnection design will be designed to restore the natural hydro period and not exceed their carrying capacity. That's important. Some people mentioned to me, "Oh, we planned to do this in the past with Halfway Creek." Well, the actual proposal they had put in for Halfway Creek wasn't to lead the eight flooding for the city of Benita Springs. It was to drain Edison Farms and other areas in the Upper Asteroid Bay watershed and turn those into developable land with residences and baseball fields and things like that. So, the amount of water they wanted to put in Halfway Creek wasn't the carrying capacity. They wanted to do it excessive. And they also had not just the drainage way under I-75, they wanted to build large canals to collect that water so the water would pulse out quickly. That was a bad project, and that is in fact, one of the reasons when I was working for the agency, I objected to it. That was a bad idea. This is not what we're talking about here. We're talking about here, just putting the amount of water that belongs from the Asteroid Bay watershed for that part of the Asteroid Bay watershed into Halfway Canal. Now, river flooding will not be reduced by transferring flooding to another watershed. So, what we're, we don't, some people have suggested, "Well, let's take the Imperial River water and throw it to somebody else." That's not what we're looking for. We're just looking for putting the watersheds back where they belong. Potential solution seven. Where available, obtain unoccupied lands, including the native lands, exotic infested lands, mine lands, agricultural lands, rooter lands, and otherwise vacant lands, adjacent that are in your existing floodplains or immediately adjacent to your floodplain. Because even lands adjacent to the floodplains can be used. This will include the surplus lands that I mentioned that are now available, and I think you really want to actively pursue this before they become beyond your control. Potential solution eight. You can establish a better, higher stormwater retention standard for new development, better than the ones that we talked about earlier here, that will be ready for storms greater than the planned 100-year storm, historical 100-year storm event. This would be for residential, commercial, industrial, recreational, ag. Those standards would retain and manage more water on site and provide for gradual release. And try to turn it into a system that does let water go out of it all year round. Not a system that holds everything back, and then when you get a lot of water, you suddenly discharge it. That flashiness is causing a problem for your system as well and accelerates flooding. Solution nine. If an existing building on a floodplain is to be replaced or retrofitted to more than 50% of its foundation area, then the building would have to meet the current flood elevation standards. No exemptions. And we don't want to be giving variances for people to build things that are not going to be protected in a future flood. Given the ongoing rate of sea level rise for the city, I'm going to be recommending that additional elevation besides the current standard be added if you wish to consider that. Because that'll make sure that your houses will have a longer lifespan as we go into the future, particularly if you want your residents to be around for more than 100 years. Here's just an example of some different designs associated with that and different ways to address it. If you do the ones that are closest to the river in that way, then flooding should be expected in those lower features which have elevated the house. And that should be not an issue for people if they've made that decision that they're going to keep their parking area or some form of enclosed area of storage within the floodplain. But it can be done with fill, it can be done by getting out of the floodplain and having a basement. Watertight walls can be constructed. Now, an important feature here, as we are doing inspections, you could go into neighborhoods here in Benita Springs, and you'll find a house that's in the floodplain at ground elevation. You can find another one that's a little higher that was built later, another one that's a little higher that was built later, and so forth. So, those houses that were up at the highest level did not seem to have any, in this event, building flooding. But of course, the ones that were down in the floodplain did. One problem is if you get into a situation where a number of new buildings are put in at the higher elevation, but you've left one building at the low elevation, they become the stormwater treatment area for the adjacent houses. This has happened in a few communities here in Southwest Florida. And so, it's something that could be considered as you're looking at the overall community and its relative elevations. It might be good to consider a program to assist those who are at the ground elevation to help their houses elevate it in anticipation of the future higher elevations that are going to be built around them. That would take funding, that would take support, and likely, we'd have to go to like a federal or state source to find that kind of money. Potential solution 10. If an area's been intentionally designed in its surface water management system and permitted to use its roadways as flowways during temporary events, this information should be legally disclosed to the community and all new buyers and renters. One of the most common first-week things I got from people talking to me as I worked on the project is, "Why did my roads flood? You can't let my roads flood. My roads shouldn't be flooding." Well, if it's designed for that, and the storm comes it's designed for, yes, they are going to flood. And so, this needs to be disclosed to people. They need to understand that. The roads should be posted that they will function that way. If you go out west to certain communities where when they have a rain event, it's always catastrophic. They actually have the roads that they expect to act as rivers within their city, like Tucson, that are going to flood. They have them posted. This is going to be, you know, a flowway during a rainstorm, do not drive in it. This is something to be considered. I really do think it's important that people know their community and know what's available to them, and expect that there will be times, as the most extreme storm events occur, that they will not have an easy passage out of the community until the roads drain down. So, this is a potential solution 11 that showed to us by Pelican Landing. Emergency sluice gates, they provide very effective. They determine the existing, we want to look to see where existing modern stormwater management systems could use them but don't have them. And assist those communities in getting them installed. This is a good solution for those type of what I call boxed-in modern communities that have the berm all around them, but need a place for a better outlet when the storm event occurs. I think we need, as has been recommended by Pelican Landing, we need to work with the Southwest, or South Florida Water Management District to get greater flexibility in operating the existing and future emergency sluice gates in response to storm events. And one of the things that's been suggested is that they have the allowance to use the gate when the storm comes, not having to wait for a potentially long delay from the Water Management District giving them permission to use it. Okay. And how do you pay for a lot of this? Well, the idea would be to establish a stormwater flood reduction utility fee to assist in the funding of the necessary projects. The fee would include a base citywide assessment to cover your citywide projects, the things that help the whole watersheds, that help all the Imperial River, all the Spring Creek. And then, as needed, have additional MSTU assess for specific development neighborhoods when a retrofit or a project only affects that one particular area. And I could envision, and I'll expound on this further in the document, where you may have a community who's responsible for their surface water management system, but they're not well-organized to maintain and upgrade their surface water management system. They can make a request of this stormwater utility that they would handle the job while they pay the fee into the stormwater utility fee to cover the expenses of operating within that private community. This is not like a blanket thing that every community suddenly becomes managed by the city, but it would be on a, as a request base from those communities that want to have that service. A number of the problems that happened in some of the communities was they had not maintained their management system. And part of that led, was a confusion of who was responsible. Because the developer, when they built it, was responsible for it. And then oftentimes, a developer would transfer it to association, but not all the people who are now living in that community know about that transfer to the association. And at least know one community where decisions were made not to continue the maintenance without people who are living there today knowing that that decision had been made in the past before they were there. And so, now they had a flooding situation from culvert systems which are not operating properly, and their only relief is then to go back and fix that themselves, but they've not built up their revenues and resources to be able to do that. This is not just a problem unique to Benita Springs. I've run into this problem looking at many communities across Southwest Florida, all up and down the coast. And the clear transfer of who's responsible for what waterway is very seldom made clear to the people living and depending on that waterway. And we've looked at another additional situation like that, where part of the waterways are the city's responsibility, part of it's a private entity's responsibility. Those need to be coordinated, and a stormwater management utility could help with that type of coordination. So, these are some of the specific areas we've looked at. I'm not going to read them all out to you. There's quite a few areas around the city. I want to point out that the flooding that happened in each of these areas is not all from the same cause, per se, other than precipitation was the ultimate source of the water. But there's other, many different reasons why each of these has their flooding problems. The one area I need to dig closer into is, did we have coastal area flooding of an substantial amount? So far, no one's repeated, reported to me that we have, but I bet you there's some people out there that know this stuff that haven't really shared it. And we know that we did have between four-
Yeah, public comment from our city attorney.
Okay. Yes, I will appreciate that. Because I've asked and I've asked, and people said, "Well, it's all river." We know we got about four foot of storm surge with this event in the Barrier Island area of Benita Springs and in the lower parts of Asteroid, or actually Fish Trap Bay. So, these are ideas that have, I've looked at, that have significant problematic issues. And I'll be happy to tell you what the problems are if you want to know. One would be to reduce or eliminate problems of agriculture on mine off-pumping. Water Management District basically has a much better, easier allowance on agriculture and mining operations to get water off their land. And it's, a lot of what comes down the Keel Canal is coming from sources like that. A partial riverside barrier, dike, or levee construction adjacent to the Imperial River, we field investigated that. Basic problem is that you don't have a public right-of-way to put these features into. And land that we investigated that was suggested for that actually was private property with multiple oxbows. And you, if you understand what I'm talking about, is the river was doing sinusoidal, snake-like shape, and if you're going to do a barrier there, you'd have to basically set back a significant distance on private property. Even then, you have to tie off your barrier to adjacent areas of high elevation. And as I mentioned at the beginning, Florida is flat. So, you don't have, you don't have the space, and it's unlikely that those people who are living right on the river are going to give you the right-of-way to build a dike or berm or levee of sufficient size to have held back a flood of this size. And sending floodwaters to distant watersheds like the Kalusahatchee or Big Cypress, it's just a bad idea, and it's cost prohibitive, and you wouldn't get it permanent. Other suggested ideas not being considered at all, I'm not even, I haven't even investigated closely into this, is channelizing Imperial River like the Kalusahatchee River. A riverside barrier along the full length of the Imperial River. Sending the floodwaters, as I mentioned, distant watersheds. Building a giant dike around the crew and turning it into something akin to a shallow lake of Kachobi. Or solving one neighborhood development flood problems by off-pumping and transferring the flood to an adjacent neighborhood development that would then have the flooding. So, no, we're not going to evaluate these alternatives or price them out for you. So, you can know my contact and how to get ahold of me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Jim, thank you very much. A lot of food for thought and great presentation. Thank you. So, counsel?
Yes, Mayor. Jim, in potential solution number one, you mentioned about there were some areas, flat areas, that there was no berm, no anything. Can you tell us where, I mean, is this places that we don't know about?
I think there are places that you know that flooding's occurring, but it's interesting, it's street by street, you'll find some areas that do not have this features. And some of these are basically in what I call the box, which is between Benita Beach Road, Imperial Parkway, Terry Street, and I-75, some of the older communities there.
Yeah. Any other question I have in solution number nine? You talked about the sea level rising about three feet. Over what period of time?
That three feet, if we stay at our current rate, would probably come up over 300 years.
Oh, 300 years.
But we've been having acceleration. So, when I first started doing the evaluation of sea level rise in the region back in 2007, we were going at a rate that was about the thickness of a Velveeta cheese slice. Now, we're, the most recent evaluation is, we're now going at the rate of a Velveeta sleeve slice plus 16% of a Velveeta cheese slice. So, just over that short period of time-
So, we don't have to worry about that in this room here?
Well, I do not think, unless I, I heard today on NPR that they're now being able to take brain cells that are alive and map them into a computer. So, unless we do that for ourselves, then I don't think our consciousness will be around at the time that occurs. But, no, I, you know, I'm a long-range planner. So, you know, when I look at situations, I can tell you what's good for 50 years, what's good for 100, and what's good for 300 years. But if you want to go beyond 100 years, looking at the range of probabilities, an additional three feet will get you in a much better place. And that's what some of the planning over on the Southeast Coast is doing right now for the four-county compact.
Thank you, Jim, very much. That was an excellent report. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for the report. It was very informative. And when I was thinking about these potential projects that we engage, are engaging in, I focused on kind of the result rather than how you do it. So, I like to prioritize those, the box communities, and get an understanding for what projects we can do, at least in the short term, to not really mitigate but minimize any potential damage, because none of these things are going to happen in the near future other than maybe doing the maintenance kinds of things. So, I'd like to have from you an understanding of how these potential solutions would affect those specific communities. The other one that I find particularly interest, I think they're all interesting in various ways. We could discuss every one of them individually, is the water retention. Because it does make sense to me that this sheet flow that's been coming is not, certainly not going to the proper place, but it needs to be contained before it's distributed. So, I'd like to have an emphasis on that kind of water retention east of us and develop that. And then again, I said, "It's not that I'm against some of these other things," but those are the focus that I would like. And I, for one, would like to understand how the entire system works. We talked a little bit about that earlier, is when we have these islands, which are our stormwater management systems within our various neighborhoods, when we have them, I think it's important to understand how they're connected. Because if we don't know that, we're not going to be able to control it or to influence it, or even to encourage people to improve what they have there. So, that's what I'm interested in. Thank you. Thank you again for your work. It's really great. And I can't believe you did this in how many weeks?
Basically, it's a little bit past three, but not quite four weeks.
Very good.
He had a 30-year start, though.
Oh, you had a 30-year start.
Or 34. One thing I want to point out is the order that I showed you, except for the very last one, which is, you know, how to fund it, is generally the order I see these things being done.
Oh, priorities.
But some of these will be ongoing, like, we should be starting the planning for the regional stormwater treatment facility in the DRGR first year. But you probably won't be able to build it until year five or six. Because it'll take a little while to get the engineering, acquire the property, and do all of that. But yeah, do one, and then two, and then three, and then, we can do this, and many of these things concurrently.
Rayles?
I just had a question about the MSTUs. Who sets those up? Is it something that the, that neighborhood that would have to vote for themselves, or is it something that can be a kind of, you know, I guess, forced on them?
Well, these are done in different ways, but generally, I, I think the recommendation I'm going to give you is that the neighborhood volunteers to do it. That they decide that they've got a problem they want to address, and they'd like you to help them address it, because you've got the resources, the skills, the expertise. And it's kind of like, I don't know if you're familiar with the idea of beach re-nourishment, sharing. When people start beach re-nourishing along the coast, all the communities try to get the same contractor to nourish the beaches as they go. So, they don't hire this contractor for Fort Myers Beach and that contractor for Santa Bell and that contractor for Captiva. They try to line the guy up so he can do it as he goes. So, it's more cost-effective, then one contractor mobilizes and he gets the job done much quicker and a lower expense than if you hired three separate contractors. So, if a community decided that they'd like to use the already existing stormwater utility skills of the city of Bonita Springs or the people that see Bonita Springs has contracted to do that for them, and just as they come to their neighborhood, they'll take care of their maintenance and inspections each year too, then that's how I would envision it. So, no, I wouldn't see it as a forced thing, but as a cooperative agreement.
It's also possible that we would do it without MSTUs.
There are other mechanisms.
Right. And Audrey's actually working on that. We're doing research that, you know, will be presenting, she'll be presenting to counsel on that. Fred, did you?
The comments you made about sheet flow flooding, sheet flow doesn't cause flooding, but isn't one of the biggest things that's happened is, since the 95 flood, for example, there's been hundreds of thousands of acres that used to store water or allow sheet flow to run on it and not shoot it off to the river. It's been taken out of the inventory of storage and converted to developments. Is that my-
That is, that is indeed true. And the shallow hydroperiod sheet flow, seasonal pond and hydroic pine flatwood systems, they've been going under in the DRGR north of your city at a very alarming rate. To kind of explain it, the DRGR, and I was involved at the time with the establishment of it, had envisioned that all of that would be retained in certain land surfaces which could hold water, retain it, percolate it, put it into the ground, or gradually discharge it. But it's a matter of record that the Temple State University changed all of that. And when that exception was made and the university village was cut out of it, then the other cuts followed and other cuts followed, and it's continuing to this day. There are solutions to this problem. There was a good study that was done showing about re-establishing the flowways within the system and places where development shouldn't go and clustering what remaining development that would be allowed along the nearby urban corridor. But even though that was done, and I think it was a very good project, that's not the pattern of development we're seeing right now.
Is that Dover Cole you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the work that Kevin Irwin did and other people.
In '09.
Yeah. I contributed technical expertise to that on behalf of the agencies. The, I'm going to tell you a hard fact. Those communities that you built, or Lee County, I guess, allowed to be built, south of the Bonita Beach Road, east of I-75, those are all sheet flow blockers. And they shouldn't have been designed the way they were to block the flow that was going into the Kaukahatchie watershed. Of course, the canals along the Bonita Beach Road and the paving of Bonita Beach Road was also done incorrectly. So, there's, you have a legacy out there in your eastern city that needs retrofit because of bad decisions made with regard to hydrologic management, which basically took the solution of trying to throw all that water that should have stayed in a DRGR-type area and flowed through and send it to the Imperial River.
I've got a quick question on that, just real quick. I'm a little confused and a little slow on the uptake, I guess, tonight. Because at our last meeting, you made the comment about when the town of survey was made or when they were doing it, the area along Quinn flooded. I think when the town of survey was doing all that, there was no development east of town.
Right. But I wasn't talking about the flooding at Quinn.
Well, but you're talking about flooding and sheet flow.
Yes.
And that's, you're saying that what's contributed to it is the development south of Beach Road.
Yes.
In '04, Village Walk was done. So, you know, that was, there was no Village Walk in '95 and prior to that, and then Town of Survey. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. One time you say it's, you're just in a low area, it's going to flood. But now it's being blamed on X and Y and Z. And I'm just trying to figure out how the two correlate together, because if it was flooding in the 1800s in that area with no development, and let's go to '95, when southwest Florida Water Management bought all the lands one mile, or one mile east of Bonita Beach Road, north of, or Bonita Grand and north of Bonita Beach Road, that's all been there for retention and everything. And now, one of your comments earlier was that the Keel Canal is being overrun because of mining and agriculture.
Off, off pumping.
Off pumping. That's what I mean. There's no agriculture out there anymore on that side. Unless you're talking in Estero and stuff like that.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Why isn't that being diverted into the Estero River?
That's something that's addressed with the Return the Watersheds project. But let's get back to the point that I made, that the causes of flooding throughout your city, while precipitation is the ultimate source-
Correct.
-the reasons things flood in different places is different. And the reason the survey flooded is because they camped in the floodplain.
Which was, as you said last week, was the Dean and Quinn and Downs area.
Yeah. So, this happens wherever people camped in floodplains in the 1800s.
No, I'm just trying to make the correlation-
And I'm not saying that the development that happened much later in this century had anything to do with that flooding. I was asked, however, about the sheet flow in those areas east of the interstate, was that contributing to flooding? And yes, it is, where the sheet flow is being blocked and diverted into a canal. And so, my point again is, it's not the sheet flow that's flooding you. It's the putting the sheet flow into a narrow discharge and then trying to send that into another location.
Jim-
Yeah, all, just a good example, I worked for 16 years in an office up at the Webb Wildlife Management Area. And it has sheet flow over that entire 64,000 acres of land. It fills up with water in the summertime, and sheet flows across the property. They actually, when they built the interstate, they wanted to do excavation on the game and fish commission's land to get fill for the approaches. But the game commission said, "No, we don't want you to do it the old way. We want you to build us a lake." And that whole lake that's running along the interstate was designed for habitat and for holding that water that was being thrown off and collected. And then that gradually releases to Alligator Creek, and then that goes down to Charlo Harbor. That system does not flood. Webb Lake, which was the man-made lake system there, acts as a regional stormwater collection system. So, that's basically something like that that I'm recommending in your DRGR. So, it would capture the flows that come off of the adjacent DRGR in Lee County, collect it, and you may even design it to be a great fishing lake. And then put it off and gradually. But you do have a legacy here of land use decisions that have put you into situations where flooding is occurring. And now, it's being recommended that you make some land use decisions that will alleviate that, reduce your flooding, but won't eliminate it.
Well, I think, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm too sensitive to it, that it's, you keep saying "we, we, we." It's really Lee County. Because if Lee County's allowing this to happen in Estero before they became a city, or in San Carlos, or even when it happened to us, before, before we became a city. And now, it seems like, you know, we're taking the brunt of it, of being considered "we." Because, I mean, every time you say, "You've done this, you have a legacy of doing this," to me, I'm taking it personal when it's really Lee County and all of southwest Florida. We're just, as you put it, at the end of the funnel.
I think if you look at what I've said, you'll find that I did not say the city of Bonita Springs did that.
No, but addressing us. And I know, I'm not blaming you for saying that. I'm just, you know, feels like taking it on the chin.
Okay. A lot of these decisions, Lee County would not have made if they weren't following state and federal rules and standards.
Right.
The interstate was built by the federal government. A lot of your roads were built by the state. The developers who wanted to develop the land and convert wetlands into uplands, they're the ones that made the request to the entities to allow it. So, as a regional planner, I see the region as all working together. I do think it makes sense to work with Lee County to get them to help you solve this problem.
Jim, I had a few things. Could you spend a little time on the celery fields project, so we understand that better? Since Sarasota County, it was caused, what, it was, Philippi Creek had flooded?
Philippi Creek flooded, and it also had major water quality problems-
Okay.
-which went into Estero, or into Sarasota Bay. And what they did is they took an area that actually was celery fields.
Right.
And the owners knew that they were going to get out of the business, because celery was being grown cheaper overseas, and they couldn't compete. And they were planning on selling all of that to development. But the city and the Water Management District up there, which is the southwest Florida Water Management District, got together and said, "Instead, why don't we turn this into a regional stormwater treatment facility?" So, they set up to capture the flow that came down Philippi Creek, which is actually channelized in that section, and put it into a big receiving lake.
Okay.
And it's such a big, deep lake, they actually do, have done things like water ski on it and stuff.
Right.
Then it goes into shallower water bodies and shallower, and then into big marshes. And then the big marshes go eventually down to the Par of Philippi Creek, where it overflows a very, very wide discharged area. It's not just one little area, it's rather extensive, you can walk across it, feature. And then that goes back into the creek with the water treated. It's basically between Bee Ridge and Fruitville Road in Sarasota County. It's that, that long and large. It has the benefit of gravity to help it flow, but they also do have pumps as they need to. They've made it into an amenity. They have nature walks, they've got friends of the celery fields. And these dirt that they got from digging out some of the areas, they turned into a small hill that people also treat as amenity, and people like to run up and down.
How does that attenuate the flooding?
It captures, it captures the flows of the, of the system to go through that.
Another concept that, you know, we've heard a lot about is dispersed water management program, north of Okeechobee. The governor is a big proponent of that. You can go on the Water Management District website and you can see an awful lot of land. What about something like that as part of the toolkit here?
That works if you have places to disperse the water, too.
All right. And how does it work?
But, well, basically, it normally takes advantage of an agricultural landscape-
Right.
-with a lot of water retention facilities. So, like eastern Collier County, that would work, where you have major ag operations and they've blocked off, you know, many, many thousands of acres of stormwater retention. It could work in parts of Lee County that are east, but you do not have that now within your city boundaries.
Okay. Another concept you mentioned was this regional stormwater collection, meaning among neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm.
I know Collier, or maybe it was Naples, I've read that when they put their stormwater utility, they worked on neighborhood basins.
Yes.
Is that a similar concept?
Very similar.
All right. Well, so what, how, what is that exactly?
Well, basically, they're, they're collecting all the stormwater and putting it into a water feature, which in parts of Collier, they designed to look like a pond amenity.
Okay.
And they manage that, they'll put in aerators, they put in some plant vegetation to reduce the nutrients, and they maintain that. And so, then, instead of each individual lot trying to manage the stormwater, they all get stormwater managed for them. And it's done in the older parts of the county and the city.
I didn't follow when you were talking about this concept of step-ups out of Keel. Physically, what is that?
It's a series of weirs.
Right.
Each weir would have a higher elevation before the water flows over it as you head eastward. So, it's, keeps water levels higher within-
You head eastward, okay.
It keeps water levels higher within the canal as you go from west to east.
Okay.
And as you keep that water in that, the ground, it will feed groundwater back during the dry season.
When you drive out on Corkscrew, or actually even better if you look at it on a Google map or anywhere from the air, there is a massive amount of farm fields out there today. Most people don't realize it's massive. Can you explain how the Water Management District deals with their ability or inability to pump, to store, et cetera?
I would probably invite you to have them come and present that. But what I've observed, what I understand, and what I've been presented to me as I worked on the Lower West Coast Water Supply Plan, they basically get permits for managing the water-
Right.
-that are allowing them to basically get the water off of their land surface and down below the land surface for a certain distance, depending on what they're doing, as soon as a storm event occurs.
Okay. Are you saying that is something we need to check on?
Yeah, because if you have people who are able to get the water off their landscape immediately, and you have other entities that don't get to do that, then the people downstream are going to have water come to them relatively quickly.
Now, when you say, "Don't send water to other watersheds," I assume in that you're not including, you, you would be looking to send as appropriate water down to the Kaukahatchie Canal.
Yeah. As I mentioned, the Kaukahatchie, the Spring Creek, Halfway Creek, and Imperial have all been linked.
Right.
When I meant said other watersheds, I mean like trying to pump it up to the Kalusahatchie or down to the Big Cypress, or, you know, something like that. People have done projects like this in California.
Long haul.
It's always come to tears.
All right. Do you have a sense of how much water, however you would phrase it, proportion or whatever, used to flow south before that land? Actually, it was also DRGR land way back, right, on the south side of Beach Road?
There, there is a regional flow model in the Mike Shee, Mike Levin.
Right.
I would, allow me to confer with that from the Water Management District. They have those calculations.
I want to bring this up while Jim is here. This has been mentioned by counsel. It was not in the original scope of services that we asked the Regional Planning Council, specifically Jim Beaver, to do, but do we want to have a workshop of a couple hours where Mr. Beaver can take as much public input as he can absorb and two hours from those that want to come and talk? And I, I know if we do this, you have to remember, that'll take away his valuable time from working on the main effort, but it has been talked about. So, I think if we're going to talk about it, he deserves to be part of the discussion, so.
I would say absolutely, yeah.
But may I point out-
Yeah.
-that I've been meeting with the public in the course of the project. So, on the workdays that I've come here, I've also set up time here in your building to meet with people by appointment and anyone who wants to set up a time to talk to me- anyone who wants to set up a time to talk to me and tell me about what they're thinking and what their input is, and get information back from me, I'm doing that as well. That's not to say I wouldn't participate in something you requested me to do, like a big public hearing. I will say that over my more than thirty years of experience in planning processes, you don't always get your most accurate input in such settings.
Well, I just want to comment on that individual attention that you've been giving to, to people who've come forward, and from my community with this Pelican Landing, they've been very appreciative about the interaction. I do think that sometimes a relatively short conversation that's very pointed is very helpful than having a whole big discussion about things that they're not really focused on. But it doesn't mean you can't have both of them, you know, if we feel we, I think the public has to be aware of what's going on, we can't, you know, we have to have more of these kinds of things like that, but I, but I appreciate that individual attention that you give to people.
I guess my view is as long as in the appropriate way, people have access to Jim, whether it's quality time, one-on-one with small groups, or in one big meeting, I'm okay. Sounds like you're kind of doing that now?
Yeah, basically, I'm trying to talk with each community about their specific problem or what they're seeing. Boy, again, this gets into what's I call social dynamic.
Right.
If, you've probably been at workshops where people get together in a group, and everybody's supposed to provide their input on something. Oftentimes, when you get a group of people together, as the groups get bigger, some people will dominate the conversation with their problem, and you don't hear about everybody's problems. And you don't necessarily know if you've heard all of the problems that you need to hear about. But like I said, I'll be happy to do a public meeting if you want to, want to schedule it, I will work that out to do that, but I'm also doing this other stuff, and I tell you, it's been invaluable.
Right.
My progress, the progress I've made so far wouldn't have been as good without the, a public input that I've received so far.
I think what, maybe what we could do as a minimum is take and have Laura, we'll put out a citywide e-blast with contact information, but also take his presentation, clip the rest of the meeting off, and put it as a link with that e-blast, so anybody that wants to watch it can watch it and, and get a lot out of it, and also hear the dialogue back and forth between city council. And I think the only other thing, we're still gonna, we still have to fine tune this legislative information, so.
That's for today, is that today?
No, it'll be, but it's going to be, it has to be by the next me, I think, because I think the reprieve Carl got was to when?
Absolute deadline, my understanding is the middle of November.
Right, so I was, I was figuring out, trying to do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Jim, I have a question, and I apologize about being late. I did the coin toss at the Benita Springs High School, the Bull Sharks, and they're off, obviously, and running, and I, it may not be apropos to this conversation, but I guess it's a morbid curiosity, where the original high school was proposed to go on Tower Road? And this hurricane and this flooding, are you familiar with the original's location on Tower Road?
I know there was one location that was inside the DRGR.
Right, that was Tower Road. How do I phrase this question? Had that gone through, that would have been an absolute disaster.
Well, in terms of the-
Our own high school would have been flooded because of the will of some to build in the DRGR. Is that accurate?
Well, I'm not going to comment to that particular statement, but I will say that of the choice sites you had, it's better not to build in the DRGR.
Right. I just, I just roll back the clock a few years ago, when there was that divisive fight to whether to put the high school on Tower Road or to not put it on Tower Road. Fresh on my mind, because I was just there, and just drove to get to this meeting, down by where they ended up putting the high school, thank goodness, to the dismay of some, but that absolutely would have been a disaster for our city, because our high school would have been halfway through construction and would have been flooded. So, okay, I just, and I think we all know that location out near the Bodys around the corner, I just absolutely think back to that conversation, and thank you for the work that you're doing. Getting through that and moving past that, and I apologize if you covered this, looking at having this train run on parallel tracks, for lack of a better analogy, so that we don't have to worry, we're going to work in coordination with a lot of people. Like I've said before, I'll say it again, water doesn't know a city line, a county line, a district line, a state rep line, a state senate line, or any, any district. What, what do you recommend to us in terms of outreach and in terms of making sure that this is a parallel track and forward progress?
Well, you know, basically, you're going to have to coordinate heavily with the other entities, political entities that are within your watersheds. Astero and Lee County, there is a integrated mitigation strategy. And having a project in that strategy puts you in a situation to get funding for your projects. The ones that we put in for the NOAA grant involving Spring Creek at the CSX and Malagro were in that strategy. So that's why they qualified for that grant application. You'll want, and that's done for, it's called the Lee County one. So your projects are in there, Astero's project are in there, their projects are in there. So you're going to want to coordinate with the people who do that, and quite frankly, try to get an update this next year to get the projects you need done into that.
Right.
It really would be helpful if your water managers and their water managers, along with the Water Management District that's going to pay attention to you. I'm talking about staff that really care about the west coast.
Right.
Because I can tell you, there's going to be, in my estimation, this is just a personal opinion, a giant sucking sound of projects toward the east coast. The people in Miami Dade and Broward are going to make demands for them to solve their street flooding.
Right.
And so you've got to make sure that the focus you've got on you right now stays on you.
And the seventy-five million dollars that Benita Springs has given, or more, right?
Right.
And what, what's the best number, or do we have a guess of what, what's come back?
Probably, I don't, I think you'd have to work hard to get five.
Right. So, does that enter the equation?
Well, certainly, you're going to have to have funding to do the projects.
Right.
But yeah, we're going to do everything we can at the Regional Planning Council to help everybody coordinate to the best solution. But as you know, we are also under threat by some of the entities we've discussed. So I think we can get this job done if people are really interested in flood reduction.
Right. Right. And, and thinking back, and I apologize if you covered this again, thinking back to ninety-five, when there was a lot of flooding and a lot of damage, you were here, I wasn't here. Did things get done? I know a lot of things were talked about. There was a lot of stuff talked about. How much got done?
I don't have a percentage of how much got done, but I know some of the major things did not get done. Because even back then, we were talking about the problem with the interstate. We were talking about the problem of Keel Canal. We were talking about the problems of substandard drainage systems in the areas where these things happened. Some of the very same places have flooded in this event that flooded then, and have flooded in between then. And I was looking at once, all the reports that your city has had put together, and there's a number of them with recommendations of projects to be done, and for quite a few of them, many of those projects were never done.
Right, right. Yeah, no, I know, and I, I guess what I'm, I'm asking questions like this for a sense, I guess, to hear your comments, but also to let the public hear these comments. We, you know, if you don't, what do they say, if you don't change your behavior, or however that goes, if, if you, you're doomed, you're to repeat history if you don't, right? Whatever that saying is?
Yeah, the one you're familiar with in science is that people who keep doing the same thing and getting a result, really makes no sense to keep doing the same thing, expect a different result.
Correct, right.
And so ignoring flooding problems in the interim has not made flooding go away in Benita Springs.
Amazing how that works. Fred?
Yeah, two points. There are developers that do understand this and do understand that we have to change the criteria. And I'm, I'm proud to say there's at least one I know of that's developing east of Benita. Number one, number two, do you, under the circumstances that like, most of the north side of Benita Beach Road was underwater from I-75 all the way up to Imperial Parkway, that doesn't mean we didn't have the flooding over on the west side. Are we, don't you think it would be a good idea when we're processing zoning applications and development, that we really go into what are you really going to do on the flooding, and stop going with this stuff? Well, you give us the approval, and then we'll let South Florida Water Management, we're going to design to their criteria. And you heard what it is, and you've seen some of the results, so I think we need to bear, drill down on it, as the mayor would call it. That's just my opinion, so whatever. I think you did a great job on your presentation.
And I'm really sorry that I missed it, but you and I have worked together, so I know, I know, I know your talents.
Well, if you want to take the time, I'll be happy to go over the front part, but I think you're familiar with most of it.
Yes, yes.
One thing to think about in terms of project approval is what's called water budget. To understand when you put fill in, when you put barriers in, when you put structures in, that that means water's going to have to be displaced elsewhere. And if you water budget your project, and if you don't see that the total amount of water that's coming off the site is being retained on the site, then you know it's going to have to go off to some location, and where that's going to be received. One of the major problems that's happened is there's been no accounting for downstream. It's always been, let's see what we can do to keep our site dry. Once it goes to tide, once it goes to river, once it goes to large canal, it's no longer that entity's responsibility. If we water budget, and we say it's going to be this much water that's going to go down the Imperial, this much that goes down the Spring, this much that goes down these tributaries, this much that goes through the canal, then you can work your way back mathematically to how much impervious surface you should have in that watershed. And then you might allocate your impervious surface when you do your land use planning. At one time, back when Lee County was very progressive, and we first got Six Mile Cypress purchased, and I'll let you know.
Was that aggressive or progressive?
Progressive.
Okay, all right.
Progressive, positive. They were, they were American, they were Americans. They decided they were going to do good to their community, and they were going to take and preserve Six Mile Cypress, preserve. I was in a high school, and I was with the group that helped get that initiative done. So the citizens of Lee County voted to tax themselves to preserve Six Mile Cypress. They decided that within the watershed of Six Mile Cypress, they were not going to allow more than a total of fifteen percent impervious surface. And that way, they could maintain a better water flow, and they could be sure that the system's downflow would be okay. And they did that for a number of years. I'm sorry to say that was eventually abandoned, but during the time it was done, the communities that were built around there were built much better. Same is true here in your area. I worked with a number of the communities here, some of which have built very progressively. The Benita Bay, the Pelican Landing, who left aside a lot of land in a lot of ways. Benita Bay uses their central slough for their stormwater management system. They paid attention to their watersheds. Those communities don't seem to have had as much of a problem as others which have come later. And in part, it's related to what you want to invest to the future when you make your land use decision, versus what you want to get done quick now and move on to the next project.
Right. And I guess in a way, right, let, let's face it, it's human nature, and none of us are builders or developers, but if you're doing a project, and you can do it one way for ten million, let's say, just to throw out a number, or you can pay attention to the environmental issues, and that's going to cost you fifteen million, do, do you think that's been a, that simplistic scenario has been rinsed, lathered, and repeated throughout the county and the city and this southwest Florida?
Well, we've certainly seen Florida be driven by cost engineering decisions throughout its history.
Right.
I guess another way to, to think about it all is that the people who want to stay and live here take more care of it than the people who want to come here, change it, and then move on to the next commu, next place they're going to develop.
The next part of America that has some land to build.
And they don't want, they don't plan to keep a long-term commitment to the community. So you, you do see that, I've seen that differences over my whole life here in southwest Florida. The, ultimately, there are solutions to reducing your flooding. And it's just going to be a matter of taking a long time, a long effort, but you can get yourself back to a better situation. But you'll never really return to a situation where you won't have any flooding at all.
Right, right. And I've got one question, I don't know how council's doing. You know, we, we got the pumps, and we, we, with Worthington and some of the neighborhoods out where Councilman Forbes lives, and we, you know, pumped that into the Coker Hachi. What, without those pumps, obviously, that wouldn't have happened, master of the obvious there again, but in a normal day and a day-in-out, day-in-day-out situation, and you had touched on this earlier, but I didn't hear maybe what you had said earlier, how much water goes into the Coker Hachi at this point? Any?
I, oh, yeah, water comes into Coker Hachi from the watersheds it has in Collier County. I'd have to go to-
I mean, from, and I hate to say it, from Benita Springs, from Astero, how much water?
Not much.
Goes into the Coker Hachi?
There's some that's going down from areas south of the Benita Beach Road, somewhat, somewhat to the west of these other developments that are further to the east. These are older developments which maintain some connection of the flow to the south. Yeah.
And, and not that you want to spot check projects like this, obviously, you want something that works for the good of the order as a whole, a complete, and I understand that. But in this, and there again, I'm so sorry that I missed the presentation, but I'm going to look at it in earnest, I can, I can assure you that. For that area east of seventy-five, to get water going to the Coker Hachi in two minutes or less, not to handicap it, but I know this has probably gone on a while, what, what can we do, what hurdles do we have to cross? Financially, what are we looking at?
Well, you're basically looking at doing the flowways southward and constructing them along Logan, and potentially, I've seen two other locations where flowways might be put in. You're going to definitely have intergovernmental coordination with Collier County. You're going to have to get the Water Management District to agree how much water you're allowed to send down to that watershed. You've probably got two years of permitting, just to answer those questions. And then a major public works project like that, I can, I can get a price out for you, but you're talking about something on the scale of Ten Mile Canal per unit mile.
Great, thank you.
Jim, just as a historical note, some people have said something about conservationists prevented the water from going south out there, what is that about?
I know nothing about that.
Okay.
Just real quick, we've got, I got that from Phil Flood, Southwest Florida Water Management.
I understand that.
And it wasn't going south, it was more so some going south, but the other things of making it, doing the, the culverts under I-75 and changing that water flow is what he was referring to.
So I don't question you, I question that.
I think-
Because that's what, that's some of the stuff from ninety-five.
Yeah, if it's related to the culverts under I-75.
That was draining.
I know this complaint from Phil. It's relating to the Halfway Creek culverts, and yes, we did stop that, conservation-type people did stop that, because it was a bad idea.
It's about draining Edison Farms.
As I mentioned in the presentation, it was not designed to put the right amount of water in the Halfway Creek. It was designed to drain Edison Farms and other areas from that part of the Astero watershed. It was too much water, and they also want to build deep perimeter canals around that. deep perimeter canals around Edison Farms to collect that water. And they were basically talking about a volume of water that shouldn't go into halfway creek. So yeah, that, that did happen and, but also it wasn't just that the conservationists objected to it, the hearing officers agreed that this is not something that should be happening.
I don't know if it was that. He just referred to it of the, what they were trying to do in the 95 floods from those studies. That all that stuff wasn't done, that's why it wasn't completed.
Yeah. I, I mean, that thing didn't happen be for the reasons that, that, that involved trying to throw the water into the wrong volume and for the wrong reasons.
And the halfway creek was part of a package deal with the coconut, coconut interchange.
Well, that, yeah, that further politically complicated it.
Congressman from Alaska and, right, how a bill becomes a law, all of that, yeah.
It, it was a very confused situation.
Right.
Um, the whole point of that interchange was, was not necessarily to serve the Brooks.
Right.
But was to open up that whole part of the DRGR to development.
Yep.
And of course, it also linked to the proposed for 951, being located as far east as possible to cut off that part of the DRGR, and then all of that would become development on that side of the.
Which was previously pushed by certain people in Benita Springs, among others.
And elsewhere, and, and nationally. But, but basically, I know of nothing relating to the development south of Benita Beach Road that environmentalists opposed. We did have designs when we looked at some of these communities that had flowways. If you look, look back to the old agricultural landscape at the time, they had, the ag people had flowways going through the ag areas. But those have subsequently been changed when the land development was done.
Right. Fred?
I just going to mention that the, one question you asked about Logan Boulevard, that's if you look at the original legislative listing that we had put together, that was item two on that list that we looked at. And we're refining it to make it a little better, and that'll be one of the things that Atkins looks at, assuming that you go along with my green sheet tonight. Okay?
Counsel? Closing thoughts?
Um, any questions?
Speed round, anything you want to do?
Well, any questions you might have, contact me at any time. Work office, I do not have a cell phone to keep my sanity. Um.
God bless you. How do you get away with that?
Persistence of vision.
Yeah, yeah.
But emails are also a good way, and it's oftentimes an email, you can really tell me exactly what you want, and then I can get that back to you.
Yeah, great. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, we're now going to move on to discuss an initial, discuss initial work to be authorized for Atkins, and this is green sheet 17-10-0405.
Right. I think everybody received this map. You also received a, a green sheet from me early, in fact, pretty much on schedule. And I think the big question for counsel would be, in my narrative of the map, I said there's a core area. Jim Beaver referred to a lot of it as the box, but it's basically if you start at the area that is west of Imperial Parkway, along Beach Road, and is Dean Street and all that, from there over through Quinn, we've labeled that as Area A, and we go down to I-75, which picks up the Flea Market, Oakland, all that area there. And that's in that, we're also picking up Pine Crest, Lake Shaw, Shawlezar, Morton Grove. We're also picking up Citrus Park. And that, that's what we're calling the core area that really received, for the most part, the worst of the flooding. I think Citrus Park, it's kind of debatable whether it's in the core or not. We put it in. I really believe the true story is this, that even though there's not a lot of red dots, there's probably at least eight, 900 of those units out there that had water in what you call not FEMA-defined habitable area, but the area of their units that they used probably more than the trailer or the RV, which was the enclosed Florida Room or Great Room that was built slab-on-grade. And so if you had water standing in the streets, it was almost impassable. By definition, you got it into those lower areas. That's why they're, why it's in there. Now, we also identified others. That's item H, I believe. The other areas that go beyond that letter H are what you call areas that had severe flooding of the streets. And according to Mr. Beaver, that's something we should expect, although I'm sure they didn't expect it. And in those areas, though, there are periodically a home that was lower than the adjoining homes, and it did receive water. We don't, truthfully, have probably as good a count of homes. Those areas, we've defined as to be looked at. Now, what this map is all about is, as you recall, when we presented the original legislative list, what I heard kind of universally from all counsel was, oh, you got this item two in there, and that takes care of those communities east of I-75 that are on the south side of Beach Road, and which is true. It does help everybody because any water that doesn't go into the Imperial River, which all those units except Hunter's Ridge go to the Imperial now, is a help for everybody. But you all said what you would like to see is an item. It would encompass all the other hotspots, flooded areas, whatever you want. So what we're trying to do is if we can get an agreement on this map, it would then go to Atkins, and they'll look at this and say, in order to do detailed analyses of each one of these areas, it will cost X amount of dollars, and that would be doing engineering looksees at a lot of the strategies and most of them that Jim Beaver comes up with. They might add one or two, which would be submitted to him as well as counsel for consideration. They will simply cost out what they think these various analyses would run. And in, I would say in the core area, we might want to consider that they would end up doing a, what you call computer modeling of how these solutions work, because all these communities, one way or another, interrelate to one another, or how much water goes in the river, or how much you get flooded. The other areas would be looked at on a less, less intense basis, unless you say, no, no, I want this one added in to the core, or you may say, no, you don't even need to put them in. They'd be looked at, and they would, that would be a different price estimate for those because it would be, there would be some analysis, but not as intense, because it's not the same degree of flooding these other areas had. So that's what this is all about. It simply defines what areas they're going to cost out. They're not going to do any high-powered engineering because you can't do that for the kind of money that they're going to get.
So they're going to, they're going to cost out what it would cost to do a real work, to do real design work?
What I think what I had in, yes, what I had in my, my green sheet was, the closest thing that I could give you that you might relate to was that they would take and look at different solutions, cost them out, do cost reasonableness and all that, and then the solution that appeared to be the best, they would take that maybe to the 30%, or consider this kind of like a PDNE study. More of us are, this is kind of like what, what's it cost to do a PDNE study of each one of these little areas, except it's not going to cost millions of dollars, but it's, it will cost more than.
And how does this relate to the legislative agenda?
I don't get what you're.
We would be asking for money for it?
We would lump this into, we'd come back with, here's what it would cost to do the core, to do these studies for counsel, and then we can weed them out. You could say, well, let's not go to the 30%. How much would that save and all that? But it's to get you that line item that allows real scrutiny of these troubled areas, the most trouble.
So Atkins, we're hiring Atkins to tell us what?
To do two things. To one, develop a scope of work that would be done if somebody was given the job to actually do the study, and also what it would likely cost. Because right now, if I give you a likely cost, it's going to be Fred Forbes and Matt Feeney huddled upstairs, and we're going to give you a cost. It's not going to be as good as their costs. And I think if you want to do this, that that's one of the things they could do. The other thing they're going to do, a quick look at, quick, meaning not very much money, is they're going to take and look at what we wrote up for legislative item two on that original list, and see how those monies that Matt and I ground out in his office compare to what they think it would cost. And we've come back and give, give you that information.
But if we're sitting here right now going to determine, let's say, in this little map here, S is the highly hit one, the core, the box as Jim puts it, S and L, T and all that.
Right, right.
Why do we need Atkins to tell us that? We know what it is. Now we should go out and hire a firm and say, based on Mr. Beaver's thing, this is potential fix one, two, and three, how much is it going to cost to fix that and that, and save us $35,000 from, from Atkins? Hire the company that could do the work.
Why don't we just take one example? So any, anyone that Greg took. L, S, take S, that's Quinn.
Yeah, it's Quinn's.
All right. So what do you envision them coming back with on that?
Quinn is going to be tough. The only thing you can do that would make any initial quick fix for them.
Not your view as an engineer, I'm just saying, what, what do you envision them, assuming there is something, they'd come back and say, we think a study should be done of A, B, and C, and roughly speaking, we think that would cost.
That will cost this amount.
Okay.
And then they would take the one that was the most productive in cost, subject to counsel agreeing with it, and they would take it to maybe a preliminary design to the.
Well, you're not going to get a preliminary design in one of these things for $35,000.
For how much?
For $35,000.
Oh, no, no, no. All they're going to do for, in this $35,000, and we're not going to spend all the money. They're going to give you a better definition of what a scope of work would be for a real study for the Quinn Street area, and what it would likely cost.
Okay.
That's all.
I get that. I'm, I'm okay on that.
Yeah. And then we would take, add all those up, and that would be your legislative request. Amy?
But, but I still, I mean, I think when we look at it on an individual basis, that we focus on the things that were most severely damaged. I, I know, I, I would like to think that we already have some idea of what we were going to be doing here, you know? And I thought that Jim Beaver would have those kind of, you know, come up with some kind of viewpoint, that the problem in the Quinn area is A, B, C, or D, and, and, and that what's needed to solve or to mitigate that problem could, is a long-term thing, or is a short-term thing, or a medium-term thing. And then we would go forward and ask Atkins to come in and cost up that specific solution. And that's the same, and that's the same thing that you would do on each one of these, you know?
I was just going to say, and you don't have to comment if you want, Jim, but, but, but I would appreciate it. What are your thoughts here?
The way I see Atkins as being useful to what we're doing is, let's say we look at Quinn Street, and I say, Quinn Street needs to get a more modern drainage feature system going to a regional stormwater location. Atkins, price that out for me.
Yes.
Or the reservoir system in the DRGR. Here's the design, general design, and I would produce a general idea. This is the reservoir, these are the lands we're going to be used. This is a design that comes from the celery fields. Price that out for us.
A ballpark.
Ballpark, yeah. Here's the Logan conveyance south of Benita Beach Road. Price that out. Here's the weirs being put into Keel Canal with off-canal storage and the filter marsh. Price that out.
So we have a respectable, rough number to put into a legislative.
One of, one of the things that's true in the state of Florida is if you want an engineering estimate, you got to have an engineer do it.
Well, I understand, I guess my dilemma is, is that with your 34, 30-plus years of, of doing this, and you've got an idea, okay, the Quinn Street, you're, what you said just now is a good idea, to cut out the middleman, and let's go to an engineer and say, design it, how much? And is it probable? Like, you're going to, in my estimation, with your accolades and your resume, should have an idea, is this even possible to do in one to two years? Or would your money be better spent cleaning the culverts, cleaning the silt out of it, doing X and Y, that the redesign of that Quinn area is a long-term? Don't wait, don't put your money into an engineer for that. Go and hire your engineer to clean out all the storm drains right now. That's where your biggest money is.
Well, I've already told you, you should do the storm drains right now, period. Anyway, everywhere. So that's not, that's not an alternative to.
Well, I know it's number one, I'm just.
Yeah. That's not an alternative to a regional stormwater treatment facility.
I don't have a lot of faith in legislature giving us money year one. So I'm saying, we need to spend.
Try.
I'm not saying don't try, but I'm saying, say $35,000, that may clean up a third of the ditches.
You mean bag the legislative agenda?
No, I'm not saying bag it.
Well, he's saying, he's saying you need, for the gravitas of showing what you're doing, it's helpful to have an engineer specking it out.
Yeah, I, I think we need to have specific, I don't see number one as being a project in the sense of it needs a whole lot of engineering work, but I'm not a, you know, that's my opinion, that we, we as a city should know how to do that, and to do the individual connections with companies that will do it for us. We don't need too much, more scientific work than that. But we do need work on looking at the Quinn Street area, and for you to, just the way you expressed it, makes imminent sense to me. So I would be happy for Atkins to work on that. But I'd like to have some kind of description on all the other areas that are the, the high, highly severely damaged areas. And then we could say, yes, go ahead with Atkins, because to just say, look at all this and give us up, you know, give us some solutions, I want to be certain that they've incorporated your 35 years of expertise in there. And, but, you know, that's like, I, what I think we need in order to go forward with this is to have some general idea of what you're thinking about. And then if Atkins comes in and says, no, he's wrong, or this is a better solution, we'll listen to that too. But at least we could get started in some, in a concrete way that we think is going to solve some of these problems that we're facing.
Well, we need, we need Atkins in order for me to deliver to you my final deliverable, which is the report which shows you each alternative for each of these areas with a cost-benefit analysis. So that's, that's, that was my understanding of why I went for the exercise with the city, to help you select an engineer that could do that job. And of the ones that we interviewed, they were the ones that had the greatest skill level, experience, and competence in the types of projects which I had already identified would be done for your city.
Can I make a? Going to go with Peter and then Fred.
And Fred, I'm just trying to interpret here as best I can what you're, I mean, to me, the next step.
Thank you, Jim.
I think you said the next step in a week or two, or whatever that deadline is, is the legislative agenda. And I'm thinking that the immediate takeaway for purposes of that legislative agenda is to have Jim, you, and Atkins, and Matt, whatever, if Matt's available, you know, he's working so hard, work to just give a respectable cost for all these different projects. So when we go to Tallahassee, they know where the third worst hit after the Keys and after Rivagite City, but now they'll see it. It won't just be, you know, two weeks ago, Greg, we had that one big number.
Right.
Right? And now we'll have, no. And, well, what the heck is this? Yeah, that's right. We have all these places that were hard-hit, and here are our cost estimates, roughed out as best we could. We had a scramble. Thank you for giving us a week or two, Mr. Legislature. And these are our best estimates. We scrambled, we had Mr. Beaver work on it, and we hired an engineer to work on it. And that gives that legislative request more oomph. And I think, Greg, this is one as opposed to the other ones on legislative agenda where we got to gain traction over the year. This is the year to do it.
The way that Fred's explaining it, this is not going to get done in a week.
Well, is it?
It's.
And that's what we, and that's what we have.
Can I talk here?
Yeah, Fred.
Okay, number one, Jim Beaver asked me by phone before I came to you guys with the green sheet, and said, one of the things I want you to have him do right away is look at the items we've proposed. is look at the items we've proposed for the legislative list, which one of them was Logan. Now, because you wanted me to come back and get your individual approval, we lost a week. You heard Carl say you got the 15th as the date, and we certainly don't want to wait to the 15th to have it figured out. All we were, all I was trying to do with this map was respond to what council said. You said, you only got item two, this one thing. We want something that, we want an item that addresses all these areas so they can be better studied and designed, is what, that's the way I understood it. I could have understood you wrong.
I think, as far as I'm concerned, he did it right.
Well, yeah, but I don't want to, I don't want to say, only look at items A or quadrant A, Q, and B.
I think he wants to know what you want, that's what he's asking.
Well, I'm, what I'm saying, unless you told me differently, we're going to look, the thing they're going to focus on the most is item A through H.
I think we've got a different map.
Yeah, no, because.
Because A is up, A is actually in the country club on this map.
Oh, okay. Okay, then the map got changed.
The numbers, the letters are down.
Okay, let me just call it off for you.
Right.
Okay. The area which I'm calling Quinn Street area, which takes into account that little part west of Imperial Parkway.
Which is letter S.
S and R, and R is.
He's changed my letters for.
Right.
Then, another area, which is a big area, which is all the way from Quinn Street area down to I-75, which picks up all the stuff that fronts on Beach Road, Quinn Street, I mean, Quinn Oakland, Flea Market, all that area there, that's another core area. Then IBE, the IBE area, because there's something called the Villages and some other things that are around IBE that aren't IBE, so I'm calling IBE area. And the Pine Crest area, then Morton Grove area, Lake Shalimar area. And then I said, the other area that I've got in here is in the core, and that's identified in my green sheet writing, was Citrus Park. I did not include the San Carlos Estates for one reason, that they didn't, as far as I know, get any water in the homes. But secondly, that's part of an existing drainage spatial district area, the San Carlos Spatial District. And so, that, right now, that's kind of their baby. You could tell me that you want to look at, but that's, that's why I didn't say we would be doing it, so it's not boxed.
So, Fred, this is only for purposes of the legislative agenda.
Yeah, but, well, once you have this information, we can use it to go to FEMA or whatever.
Right.
Lee County, we may want to go to Lee County.
My view, and I, but I do have a question about Citrus Park, but, but my view is, what's wrong with showing them how bad bad is and do as much as we can?
Yeah, that's my thing.
Yeah.
That's what I agree with. I mean, I'd like to get the K, the Q, and the R all along that whole little core area.
And let them say, oh, my gosh, look at these guys, this is the truth, this is not some.
Now, if one, if I didn't mention an area as in the core that I just named off, then tell me what other.
I would add it all in. Other, yeah, maybe you have a point about, what you call, San Carlos has their own water district, I mean, basically, you know? And I really don't know how we enter into that conversation with them. I think that's a little different, is that fair, Audrey?
Except.
Yeah. So, I would leave that out for that purpose. I do have a question about Citrus Park, I mean, all the rest of this is river flooding, which is really our concern.
Right.
River flooding. This, and Citrus Park, while I feel for Citrus Park, it's a private gated community that is nowhere near the river.
Right.
Somebody probably from Citrus Park said, and it doesn't mean we're not going to try to help them.
Yeah, I guess the only two things I could say, and I can, if council doesn't want it in, it's fine. Citrus Park does pump, and that water that's pumped is going down the swales and the flowways.
Well, that I would agree with. So, I think that, if I might, that it's the same as Worthington, number two. We're not going in there and redesigning with public money Worthington's internal stormwater system.
Right, no.
And I would say the same thing for any gated community. But that swell out on Beach Road, which is equalized with the Imperial River, is on Lee County land, not on Worthington, Palmara, San Remo land. And so, that's what, whatever the old Greg was, number two in the original list. And I would say the same thing for Citrus Park. In other words, if you're saying, address it as it relates to that, I would totally agree we should be trying to help Citrus Park.
Yeah.
In that context, in my two cents.
And if you're sitting in Tallahassee, right, and you're saying, okay, let's just, I'm picking a number out of the air. Benita Springs is requesting 25 million.
Right, 50.
50 million, whatever the number is, 100 million, right? But we owe it to them to ask a breakdown. I mean, they, okay, we don't want 100 million, okay, what do you get? We need to make it very, we need to itemize A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K. Itemize it for them so they see it. Everybody likes options, not that we want to give them A, B, C, and D, you know, or E, all of the above, whatever. But, look, we need to break it down. We can't just say, okay, 100 million, poff, are you in, or you're out? Well, this is what 50 million will do, this is what 75 will do, this is what 25 will do, this is what 15 will do, whatever. We get the point, but I think the drill down, as I like to say, the detail, the detailed areas, the number of places affected, the costs, the number of people that live there, that all, we all need to blend that all into the same cake. So, I think the, there cannot be enough detail.
Right.
For Tallahassee to see.
Right.
For this number we're requesting.
I don't want to link it to the core, I want the whole thing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I don't want to look, I don't want to look Citrus Park or Benita Springs Country Club in their eye and say, sorry, we didn't want to help you, we only concentrating on the core.
Right.
Even though it's not my district.
But I think, the way they look at things like Citrus Park and the Worthington and south of Benita Beach Road is that, that's part of the flowway problems that we have. You know, it's how we move water from one area to another without overwhelming other systems. So, whereas we might have individual projects for things like Quinn area, those are more global in the sense that they would be citywide and regional. So, I think we still have to cost that one out. I mean, I hope we're still going to cost out like the land acquisition and retention.
Right.
I mean, that's also going to be a project. So, how are we going to describe that in the legislative process? You know, the three things that I think Jim Beaver put here are fine with me, you know? If we do, are going to do the inspection and cull force, we could, we could also ask for support for that, too.
And that was number one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it still is number, well, whatever.
And, you know, we're going to have to put some kind of, you know, dollar figure on that. And then, but I, and then the second one, you know, then the specific projects, I think should be number two, in my opinion. And then the third one, I hate to prioritize, but I think the retention only because it's longer term and it's a much broader regional project, we should do that. So, if they're going to contribute to all that and cost them out, it's fine with me.
Okay, so I think we all agree, right?
Mm-hmm. Fred, you want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Or do you want to drill down a little further?
No, no, I'm, I'm fine with the instructions I've been given. And if I don't convey it correctly to Atkins and everybody, I'm sure you'll let me know so I can correct it. One thing I want you to know, I was going to bring this up separately, but it relates. And I told Carl this yesterday, and I am convinced, let me just rattle some numbers. Benita Bay, and I know it's an HOA, but they lost, they had a $76 million or $77 million loss generally, not in the homes. That's the public, their clubhouse and golf course and everything else. Hunter's Ridge, we're probably almost, but not quite to a million. Worthington had a huge loss. I'm talking about not damage to homes. So, when you put the real damage of this hurricane in where you can come up with some estimate of how much damage was done to buildings other than HOA common areas and buildings.
Right.
We're, we don't have that, and we've got to have it if you want to be competitive on these grants, I don't care if it's FEMA, the state, the state understands big damage numbers. Now, somehow we've got to get these one way or the other, and.
Well, and let's face it, a number that coincides, okay, so Benita Springs was the third hardest hit.
Right.
But, but we come in with numbers that are 77th or 129th.
Not going to work.
It's not going to work.
No, and really, we've, we've got big numbers, we've just got to get them some way.
Right.
Even if we have to get, yeah, and I know Carl's working on it because we talked about it yesterday.
I don't believe, I think he moved the decimal point on Benita Bay there, but nevertheless.
7.7 perhaps, not 77.
No, that, what I was told was the total was 70-something, but the uninsured loss is 7 million.
I think he had a decimal off, but whatever, we'll find out.
Maybe in lost revenue of the golf course or something like that.
Oh, no.
Come on, 76 million dollars.
We don't make 70s, no.
Well, that's what I mean, that's what I'm like.
That's not even a revenue loss, you don't have that much.
I could tell you what I think the number is, but it's, it's not.
It's not that.
Not really.
But it's a big number.
It's a big number.
So, we need to get.
Bigger than a breadbox.
But that excludes the damage to homes and pool cages.
Right.
So, you add all that up, it's going to be a big number.
Fred, I agree with you that that's some number that, and I have reached out to my own community to do that, and it's not that easy to get those numbers back. But I'll continue to work on Pelican Landing.
I've got the Benita Bay numbers for the club, I know what they are, I'll give them to Carl.
We have, we have to see what has been spent so far and where we're going forward because, you know, we're not even going to repair, we're just still trying to recover. So, we can't do it this week, that's for sure.
Could Fred make a motion? Yep.
Oh, he won.
Hold on, hold on. What, city manager?
City manager.
So, the system that was used with the county where we went out and did the initial assessments, that number is 442 million.
For?
Structure damage.
In?
Not horticulture.
Here?
Citywide.
Citywide.
Citywide, not horticulture structures.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
Sure.
Fred, you want to make a motion, or you want me to make it?
No, you make it.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slackton.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilman Wukrumba.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to other items. We have an errata sheet here that, providing background information related to water storage projects in Florida, including those maintained by the South Florida Water Management District. I intend to discuss these projects with council in anticipation of the upcoming meeting with the South Water Florida Management District. Deputy Mayor O'Flynn, green sheet 17-10, 0405.
And that's why I had Mr. Beaver do my work for me. Because Celery Fields is on here, as well as some other projects, including the C4 emergency holding area over in Miami-Dade, properly called the C4 Emergency Detention Basin. So, my point is that the context for this is, there's a meeting tomorrow, Carl, right, tomorrow afternoon, with the Water Management District. And I'm going, and Fred is going, and we've talked about the sunshine with Audrey, how we're going to handle that. But I, and I'm sure Fred feels the same way, don't want to walk into that meeting without a total consensus on council of what we're going to be saying there. And my basic view is, as always, to thank them for everything they do for us. But, and also express to them the necessity, which I would hope would be well-received, of them to work with us because of the brain power they have and because of the resources they have to develop an appropriate, appropriate flood control measures that relate to what, that relate to what Jim Beaver has mentioned and what Atkins would be working with in a collegial way. So, the examples I give here now, Celery Fields is in Sarasota County, it's not, it's in Swift Mudd, it's not within the South Florida Water Management District. But I did send council a video that was put up by the Water Management District, actually, the day after the hurricane, that talked about how well, and we all know, you know, there was, for example, I was over in Palm Beach the other day, they lost their entire beach in big parts of Palm Beach. So, you know, that, that storm hit here, but it really hit over there well, as well, with water. And there was a very good presentation on the Water Management District website about how well their structures and their control structures worked throughout the district, starting from Okeechobee all the way down, protecting Cleuston, Belgrade, Belgrade, other areas there, protecting areas down by unincorporated Miami-Dade. Now, there was some flooding in unincorporated Miami-Dade. But nevertheless, this is a lot of hard work with a lot of infrastructure that has been put in by the Water Management District over decades, including many major projects in the last 10 years, absolute control structures. And, and, and facilities like what Jim Beaver was talking about, as in Celery Fields. So, it's a long way of getting to the point, which is, I think it's essential that we indicate to them that their brain power and their resources be put to work for us, with us, as regards these things. And one little last point, Peter, I know Governor Scott told you that he would be, well, you talked to him, I didn't, but the notion is absolutely concerned that we'd be taken care of in Benita Springs. And one of the things he suggested to you was that you, we look to the Water Management District for expertise to stop flooding.
That's correct.
All right, so, that's the notion of what I would intend to talk about tomorrow.
Yeah.
Was anything else anybody wants to say here?
No, and with, right, and with all due respect in that process, Councilman Forbes asked for the numbers. We've beyond paid for this help. So, the courtship and the niceties need to begin tomorrow.
That's, that's my, what I'm going to do is talk about the fact that the number is 75 million climbing and that, looking at what has happened for us directly inside the city, that I'm, I'm hard-pressed to come up to 5 million, but we know that they had their priorities. But now, since we're the third hardest hit in the state, we'd like to see some of that priority shifted to us. In addition to that, I'm going to, on the same theme that Councilman O'Flynn is talking about, I'm going to say something like, we are talking seriously, Mr. Beaver mentioned it tonight, about upgrading and enhancing our stormwater management design criteria for new communities and maybe looking at what can be done to retrofit. And we want them to feel like they're a partner in this with us. They can look at what we do as a test bed for things they may want to adopt. We are kind of a spatial area of the district, because like Jim said, we're the bottom of the funnel of all this water that drains down here. And that's, I'm going to, I intend to be cordial and all that, but I want them to know that we're, we really need their help, and also that we intend to show up at most all their meetings on the East Coast henceforth to be able to tell them what we're doing and ask for their continued support for having our back, how's that?
Yeah, yep. Peter?
Then one other thing, I think, Fred, you brought up at the last meeting, and Jim mentioned it tonight, were these lands that they're attempting to surplus.
Oh, yeah.
Did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I, first of all, did you, did the letter that you were going to sign, that got written and you signed it?
I believe so, we've been signing a lot of letters, but I think, which one in particular?
The one, the one asking them to give us the surplus land, because I'd like to take that with me and either me or Councilman O'Flynn formally present it to them.
Right, somebody can get you a copy of that, Fred.
We didn't ask to have them give us the land, we asked them not to sell it, that was, that was.
We'll take it.
But we'd like to give it, I thought we, we were, we were not comfortable with asking them to give it to us.
No, no, Carl's worked that.
But that's not what it said in the letter.
Well, no, we, I think I proposed some changes, and you may have, so, did that, did, did a letter get proposed with those changes, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's been signed by the mayor and sent.
And we'll get you a copy of that, Fred.
We did not ask for them to give the land to us.
We said, don't sell it, basically, you know?
Well, tomorrow. Well, tomorrow we'll ask for it.
Why?
Don't name it, no, keep it a surplus, but don't sell it because we're interested in it and we would like to be, have consideration for it, for our flowway projects. I think that's what the letter said, but it, we didn't say, "Give it to us."
Okay.
We should've, probably, but--
Well, that's--
Well, we can do that tomorrow.
Yeah, that's tomorrow, right.
I think the motion said that, but that's fine. All I wanna have is the letter so we can give it to them.
So, one thing, um, sorry, Fred. So, one thing, um, we, that the Water Management District has been featuring is the importance of snagging the rivers, and I think that's absolutely important, but, I mean, to me, that's like brushing your teeth when you have a broken leg. I mean, you know, we, we need more than snagging the rivers. It's the point we've made before. And, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna get a welcome feeling tomorrow. Greg was asking about, uh, the sunshine, um, and, uh, Carl, you, you had said it's, it's their meeting, it's not ours, so we can't notice it. And have you, Greg, you were asking about how we're gonna--
Well, I'm just saying, seeing how they both can speak, especially if we're gonna talk about storm water that can be brought up on both of--
Right.
Could be brought before this board, I just don't wanna, and I may, uh, slide over there, it's a game day decision.
Oh, okay.
So.
Uh, game day decision.
So, we, we were in touch with Water Management District on this meeting. The executive director was first supposed to come here.
Okay.
Matt doesn't have the time to do that.
Gotcha.
So, it's going to be at their offices. They do not want a public meeting there, in their offices. Um, they want to have, uh, a cordial discussion about the issues. Um, so, that's why, now, I did talk separately to Councilmember O'Flynn, as well as Councilmember Forbes, um, about being cautious. I, I do, and I'm not an attorney, I just talk like one. Um, but, I mean, the bottom line is, is that, that I think it's helpful that you are talking in public now about the message.
Okay.
That's my opinion, not Audrey's, so.
Well, Audrey, do you have a view on what we should be doing? I wanna make sure we're okay.
Well, anytime I hear "we," I get very nervous. What I'm hoping is that--
Well, what should we be doing? Uh, we're, you know, we're prop, what should we be doing is the question.
My preference is that you attend the meeting, or one person attends the meeting--
Right.
Because it is a closed meeting, we have no control over it being open.
Right.
And that person speaks on behalf of city council rather, and if there's others that witnessed the meeting, I think that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
But I'd prefer for one person to be the speaker.
But somebody else could go and not speak?
Absolutely.
Question.
Yeah, that's--
I've seen this work successfully. Two people go. When he talks, I'm not in the room. When I talk, he's not in the room.
Isn't that a little rude-looking?
Pardon?
Doesn't that look a little rude?
Well, I'm not worried about rude, I'm worried about legal, and I'm worried about getting our message across.
Right.
So, to that end--
And I, I am too, sir, and I'm very sensitive, and I apologize if I came off callous to the issue, but the best conservative advice I could provide is, as many of you can be in attendance, you can certainly, uh, give your introduction, say your names, that obviously is not coming before vote, before city council, but have one person really do the speaking, and, you know, this is something that foreseeably could come before council again as a vote. I do agree with Carl, it's good to talk about it, but in anticipation of this meeting, uh, that's going to occur, but because it is a closed meeting, um, I prefer only one person to really speak on substantive matters that could come before a vote.
My question is, if I step out of the room, when he talks, and he steps out when I talk, doesn't that accomplish the same thing?
Yeah, but why not have him just, I'm sorry.
Um, technically, yes, but you're basically trying to create a defense for some problem that may or may not materialize.
Well, no, I think he's asking if it's okay, that's all.
Right.
Yes.
Carl?
I don't know.
So, my only concern about having somebody step out, 'cause I think that technically meets, you know, the law.
Right.
My only concern about that is if, what if something said in the meeting while one of them's standing out in the hallway, and then they have to go back in and revisit that issue because that person comes back in to talk? And I don't know that that would be helpful to the flow of the meeting.
So, the better--
No way to other meeting. Or redundancy there.
The better thing, obviously, and we couldn't do it here, is to have it publicly noted so everybody can speak.
Absolutely.
But it, it's not our meeting.
Right.
So, that wasn't, we weren't able to do that.
I understand.
Yeah.
And we've got them coming, the first meeting in November, is that correct?
Yeah, my understanding that is that Phil Flood can make it here, and he's not sure about Rick Barber, but, but Phil is committed here on November first.
Right. Yeah, I mean, and, and in a way, I think we, we, we have an open invitation for when they can be here, you know?
And I'm going to the meeting on the ninth.
The ninth.
November ninth.
You're going. In Palm Beach, West Palm.
Okay.
I just think, as a deputy mayor, since he's gonna be there, I mean, if the mayor can't be there, obviously, you're, you're the next in line, so, I mean, I just--
Well, Fred, do I have all your points here?
Yeah, and I might as well not go, because, I mean, there's no, I've got other things to do, and so you, you go do it, and--
All right.
I'm going to one on the night, so it's--
Okay.
Good.
And, and Matt's gonna be with you.
Okay, perfect. The guy was really doing the work.
I think we need to--
As opposed to talking.
I think we've said an interesting thing about Tallahassee.
Which is?
About what? I'm sorry.
What he said.
What does he--
Remember it.
I didn't hear what he, I didn't hear what he said.
I don't mind repeating it.
Quiz, it's a quiz.
Well, it's a quiz, I just said I don't have a lot of faith in Tallahassee to give us money the first year.
No, no, that's--
Well, I think on this, we will. I hope so.
Yeah.
I, I, you know what, and I'll say it right here publicly, if I'm wrong, I'll be the first one to stand up in front of everybody in the city and say, "I was wrong."
Well, what are you buying?
Yeah.
Come on.
Okay, well, I'll buy us all dinner.
It's on the project.
I don't care if you say you're wrong, it doesn't do anything for me.
Hey, you don't know my ego. That's, that's rough for me, right, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, that's right, buddy.
I think, I think we will get something, I don't know that we'll get what we asked for, because all kind of, but we do have that third hardest hit.
Yeah.
And that, we gotta play that hard, and we gotta, we'll look to see if we can increase the damage thing some more.
And I'll make my commitment now, I mean, I'll go up any week we wanna go up. I know I'm already going two weeks for other issues, but--
Okay. Uh, do we need anything else there? Are we good?
I think, anybody else have any comments on this tomorrow? Am we good on?
No, it's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then, Carl, thanks for putting this together. I just thought, uh, it would make sense for us to see invoices that have happened, uh, since the, since the hurricane. If you look at this next errata sheet here, uh, this is Hurricane Irma. Related invoices processed through October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen, green sheet seventeen ten oh four oh seven. So, Carl, thanks for putting this together. I know Ann is here to answer any questions that we might have.
We also have the directors here to answer as well, sir.
Right, no, that, that's, that's fantastic, and, you know, you look at this, and there's obviously a lot of things. I guess my first question is, I would go to line number sixty-six. Uh, we know there's a lot of tree removal, we, um, the, the number is fifty thousand, right? If the number's under fifty thousand, it doesn't have to come in front of council for approval, is that correct?
I think under the emergency ordinance, the numbers goes up to close to three hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, it does? Okay.
Yeah, over fifty.
I was just curious, you know, you see, thinking in my head that it was fifty thousand, you see a number of forty-nine thousand five hundred, if that was a, a workaround in an emergency situation, and if it was, I'm answering my own question, I'm glad that it was, 'cause I guarantee it needed to be done, but in terms of looking at numbers, uh, so that, that number is not, that's an accurate number?
Yes, sir.
No, I, okay.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Okay.
It's not a, get it under fifty thousand. Um, and then looking at the rest of these, I think they're pretty straightforward, but I think, you know, it's nice for people to see, uh, what, what has happened here, uh, for the discretionary fund since, since, since the hurricane, and council, do you have any thoughts, comments, questions? So, we're looking at a total here, um, of discretionary, from the discretionary fund, Carl, of two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and eighteen cents since the--
Actually, you need to add the thirty-one hundred next to it, so it's two-eighty-one oh-eighty-two.
Two-eighty-one oh-eighty-two fifty-four. So, for those listening, or those that might wanna report on it, that is the number, two-eighty-one oh-eighty-two fifty-four, but importantly, that does not include debris pickup, correct?
Right, this is only for things that have been processed through finance, so those, those invoices, uh, have not been paid yet.
Right, right.
But if you'll notice, Thompson Consulting, like on, on line eighty-five, eighty-six, for example, those are consultants, those are the monitors.
Mm-hmm.
They're the ones that making sure that when Crowder Golf says they've brought in X number of cubic yards, they've brought that in.
Yep.
Yep.
It is good to see them picking up the debris, and they are working hard.
Yeah, thank you. Fred?
And all these, most of these contracts are all ones that hopefully someday FEMA and the state will help reimburse us back the money spent, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might add to that--
Yes, Carl.
I think it's a great point. Um, we're going to be submitting to FEMA on all storm-related expenses. We may not get them all, but we're gonna, we're going to do, we're gonna submit all of them. We do have a consulting firm working with us on that. Um, they've done a lot of this kind of work, and we also just came off a, an exploratory phone call directly with FEMA yesterday, talking about expenses. And so, we're, uh, in fact, I think I got the impression from them, they were pretty impressed that we're as far along as we are in terms of our documentation, uh, but we guarantee them there was more coming.
Right, good, good. Yeah, yes, there's a question, Carl. Uh, what I don't understand is the part about FEMA. And when you submit all your expenses, what percentage of that are we gonna, might get back from FEMA?
It, it depends on the category, and it also depends on the length of time after the storm that's passed. So, for example, one category, um, is one hundred percent, but that's only for a thir, a certain thirty-day period after the storm, all right? There's others, like storm debris, where you're gonna be at ninety percent, but you're going to be, but that's only for thirty days, and that's already expired.
Mm-hmm.
However, I know we've already put in requests to extend that thirty-day period because this storm has affected so many different communities, there's no way there's enough equipment to remove the debris within thirty days.
Exactly.
And that's not fair.
Right.
And so, we've been working with the congressman's office--
Right.
Uh, on this, um, wrote something to the governor about it, and actually, I heard that Lee County is arguing not for an additional thirty or forty-five days. I've heard they're, they may be looking for months longer than that, which makes sense.
Well, that's, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, no, and I, you know, when you, when you look at the magnitude of what happened, obviously, it wasn't isolated to Benita Springs, up and down, so, you know, there's, and, and with what was going on in Texas and other countries, and, um, Puerto Rico, there, there just wasn't, the, you know, if it's an isolated city, you can bring in all the equipment and have everything done quickly, but obviously, that's not the case here, so we're shoveling sand against the tide in a lot of ways in terms of a timeframe, and, of course, the, you know, FEMA needs a timeframe, the government needs a timeframe, but, uh, this was not a normal timeframe in any shape, form, or manner. Fred?
Well, I just, when, when we're done, I have one last little item I'd like--
Okay. Is there any, any more on this, on the numbers? I just thought it'd be good for everybody to see. Okay, great. Uh, what, your one little item?
Okay, yeah, I, I wanted to make everybody aware that, and actually, I'm, I'm gonna propose a green sheet for next week. Generally speaking, it would address getting a person that has a lot of experience in developing strategies, which include those things that work and those things that should be avoided, for the subject of affordable housing and affordable rental housing. It's related to the flood because we've got, a lot of these hard-hit areas have put a lot of our, our working-class landscape people, uh, that are, they're basically homeless, or they don't have a place to stay, they're doubled up with other families, and, um, I know I've been approached by several people, "We gotta have a task force," they're saying. "We gotta restart up a housing authority." Remember when Benita had a housing authority? Uh, I think that, and, and to tell you what I have in mind, and if you object to it, not a problem. The person that's an expert in this area is Margaret Worsley. She's of, not only an expert in social service agencies, but housing as well, and she knows about what things work well, what things you should avoid, and I think if, and I'm thinking about a very nominal, small, little contract with her through RPC to give us strategies very quickly, and you can react to them, but if we're not careful, we're gonna be pressured into doing things with good intentions that may get you into some of these areas that don't work. One of the, one of the areas that I know, uh, that she mentioned is an issue, and that is, you get into the affordable housing, one of the things that can easily happen, people get them, they hold on to them for a minimal time period, and then they flip them and make a, a profit. The government has made it possible for that initial sale to be below the market value. So, now you get it, what's the old saying, "Buy low and sell high," you hold on to it, and now all of a sudden, it's back on the market, but it's not at that lower price. She does have ideas that even address how to not, to prevent that from happening, if it's in the affordable, re, you know, building a home and selling it at a low price.
So, you're gonna have a green sheet next week, you're saying?
I'm preparing it. You'll have it early. I'm gonna do it tomorrow, and then, and, and, uh, if, but if you say, you think we shouldn't do it, I will do it, so, I want you to know what I said.
Well, I personally think it's worthwhile looking into it, and we can wait for the conversation until next week, I guess, but--
Good, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, I do think we need a sustainable, affordable housing program. Um, meaning that, uh, whatever we do won't just work for a year, five years, but it'll work for twenty years and thirty years. And that leads me toward concepts of rental, but that's just one person's opinion.
Yep. And, go ahead, Amy, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just saying, the count, I mean, the, all kinds of entities are working on this, you know, uh, the Lee County has, the Horizon Council is working on this, so there are lots of people that are talking about it, so it's, you know, it's timely to have a conversation.
Right.
Uh, and there will be a lot of talking before we get to any programs, and there are, there are pitfalls, and then there are things that work. Um, and there are positives and negatives about rentals, but at least they're sustainable because they, you keep them at low rental so that the, the workers can come and use them.
Right.
The, the purchase has some positives and negatives too that we have to look at, so, I'm, I'm okay with that, you know?
All right.
And I have a couple other items, if you--
Absolutely, yeah.
I, I wanna just talk about the ditches of the maintenance, and I, and I, and a specific issue came up, which Carl helped me with, um, because there was a concern about, uh, one entity in the southern, uh, what is that called? Southern Pines neighborhood, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got the right street. And there was some concern that the, that the flowway was not being maintained, and, and there was a claim that it was a private entity that was not maintaining it, and I asked Carl to say, "Well, are these jurisdictions of the ditches clear?" And it turned out that the city was involved with, was responsible for part of it, and then this private entity was responsible for another, but it brought up an idea, I mean, a, a concept that I think should be explored for the city, that we really need to identify, you know, which, where the dish, where the ditches are, and who it belongs to, and who has the maintenance responsibility, because if, you know, and I guess the city in this particular case did not maintain it properly, so I wouldn't want it to be the case that the city was responsible for something and then didn't do it, and then we have to have a, um, an understanding of how we would expect the city to ma, maintain those in the future. So, we, this whole mapping system, and I think Jim Beaver, uh, intends to help us with that, at least identify the ones that he doesn't know that belongs to ones, and then the city would have to come in and, and establish the jurisdictions. So, we need to, you know, get that information, and then we have to establish a policy within the city of whether, you know, who's gonna, what frequency we're gonna maintain it, so that's one concern. And the other thing I want, wanna say, that I did ask, uh, staff to see if we could reach out to some of the care agencies. There's a whole consort, consortium of care agencies that have helped us with the problems that, um, individuals have had in regard to the quality of life that happened after, uh, the hurricane. And, 'cause I wanna have an understanding of just what the needs were after this hurricane, um, and what kind of services were provided, uh, because I think that would complete the picture of the damage to our city, so it's not just the dollars and cents of the structures and the, and, and the things that have happened. It's, we have to understand what this means to people. So, I, I know that I did talk to someone who was involved with, um, uh, First Presbyterian Church, and they're involved with, uh, Love, Inc., so they, they have a system where they, they quantify all the needs that come into that, and I'm hopeful that we could get a report from them, but I know there's, you know, Salvation Army, it's not just them, so I think once we put that all together, it'll probably be pretty amazing what the needs were. And this not only reckon it, reckon-- And this not only recognizes the great efforts that were done by these private entities, but the idea that what, what we had to contend with. And I think this would add some personalized and human factor to the damage that was done in the city, and I, for one, would like to know that. I mean, I even asked the question, "Do we have homeless people, what happened to the homeless people that we had in the sterile shelter?" And we don't really know what happened. We, I don't even know how many of Benita people were in that shelter, but somebody's gotta know.
They wouldn't tell us, right?
We asked, and they never told us. However, I did, first off, the request went out today to all of these care agencies that we're aware of, that were working in the area, 'cause we were meeting with them a couple of times during the early, early times. And so we're looking forward to, to hearing those statistics, as well as United Way and some of the other ones that were involved that were maybe not at the table, but certainly involved.
I know, you know, the United Way had $150 million that was devoted to distributing that, because that was a report we got through Pelican Landing. And I know, well, certainly, every, virtually every church or faith community did their part. But I think it would be not only interesting to know, I think it's important that we know the needs that were required and how they were met.
Well, I, I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry, no, you go ahead, sir.
We're hoping the Red Cross will be able to give us some information on how many Benetians we had in the shelter and where they might have gone. Maybe not individually, 'cause they like to be protective about that, but certainly give us a general idea as to how many went here or there.
Well, I mean, I would like to know, did they go to hotel, or are they, you know?
Yes, we're hoping we can get that information, yes.
Amy, Amy, when we get to the public comment, we can convince us here from the Rotary Club, who'll have a report for you, and we will also give a hard copy.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Greg?
I'm good.
Steve? Peter?
Something quick, Matt is working very, very hard. I had a chat with him yesterday about a conversation I had a fellow, with a fellow, let's call him Joe. And I said, "Well, how'd you make out?" He said, "I was flooded." And he lived on one of these other streets over here, you know, not where we have a lot of focus. And he talked about the debris outside, and I gave Matt a ring. And Matt said, and Carl, I'm sure you noticed, that there's gonna be a special effort now, that there are more resources to really focus on any debris that relates to people who had a particularly bad situation. Not, not that everybody doesn't have to be dealt with. Is that a fair summary? Yeah, yeah. So thanks to staff for that.
Thanks, Pete. Mike? Fred? You're good? Okay. We're gonna move on now to, Carl, yes?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I apologize. So Arlene's got a couple of items, and I've got one quick one.
Okay.
Good evening. We wanted to inform you that a few meetings ago, we had discussed becoming a storm-ready certified community, and this was part of our CRS coordinated efforts. We have now been scheduled for a tour of the National Weather Service for December 7th from 10:30 a.m. And this is with our CRS coordinator, Jim Von Rens, Rensland.
Rintel.
Rintel, Von Rintel. And so what we will be doing is we'll be partnering with the Village of Astero in this process, and so we will need five representatives. It should be a combination of city staff, fire officials from Benita, and elected officials to attend that. So we'll be sending out an email with more information. We also want to let the public know that we have a weather alert radio here at City Hall for any public to listen in on, as well as the Recreation Center for availability. And so we'll continue that. Also, we're working with the, a part of that program, we're working with Nicole at the Fire District to do the storm warning training, which will be on November 14th at the Fire District from 1:00 to 3:00, and they receive a certificate as an individual for attending that. So we'll continue that process. That is part of our CRS coordinators' process, and we're getting additional points for that. Additionally, we did receive an email from, from Margaret Worsley of the funds that we applied for through FEMA for the pre-disaster grant program, the one that was referred to a little bit earlier by Jim Beaver. And unfortunately, for that program, you have to have a shovel-ready project. So to verify, this was the project for $3,150,000, and the city had dedicated a match of $787,500. In Margaret's quick response to that, she quickly looked at, for other possible sources of those funds to get the, to get those projects shovel-ready, the engineering, the due diligence. And she was referred to by the state to the, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And so we're receiving a lot of information about this Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to break that down very, very briefly. Basically, based on the amount of damage that the state of Florida has received and Lee County as a declared county, there'll be some amount of funds that will be announced through a notice of funding through FEMA that we would be able to apply for. We do know that those projects that we want to identify have to be in the local mitigation strategy. And it was stated by Jim Beaver earlier, we are a part of the Lee County Local Mitigation Strategy. There are projects in there, and if you recall, when we made the decision to go after these projects, it was, it was a timing issue. And we knew that we had to select projects that were in the LMS. Staff has reached out to Lee Mayfield and has requested that opportunity to discuss opening up the LMS to add new projects. Obviously, we'd be looking to the projects that was discussed tonight. We would need them prioritized, and we would need cost estimates for that as well. And usually, what we're finding out is that the notice of potential funding, the dollar amount that might potentially be available, is typically done 90 days past storm, which would put us in the December-January timeframe. At our next meeting, November 1st, we've asked Jim to come here and give us a presentation on the outline of what the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program looks like. He has done several of those over the past 15 years in Collier County, and he'll be giving us an overview of what points we should be looking for and how to prepare for when the funding cycle opens. Staff at this time, we wanted to bring this forward because we've told Margaret Worsley to please not start preparing a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the projects, the Spring Creek projects, until we know from council that those are the prioritized projects that we want to come out of this program.
So if I can just add to that, I, I joined the call today with Jim, and Arlene's doing a great job on this. This is the big number that we're talking about. So obviously, we're talking about more than some pipes under the railroad track at Spring Creek. And that's why it's got a, that's why this other material that Fred's talking about is so important for that purpose, too. I, I guess it's fair that Jim said, there's some fluidity to this, meaning there are certain timetables, but it can be short, intermediate, and long, and that, how does he put it? It depends on each event, and there may be certain themes that are consistent through the events, but there's a separate, there's a different process set up for each event at FEMA. But this is the big number, you know, this is, yeah, statewide, a number in the billions.
Yes.
Alright, not that we're getting a billion, maybe, no?
So it will be suggested as we come forward, that we'll be asking some, for council to prioritize major projects, medium-sized projects, and smaller projects. And that we would be looking, the actual recommendation, the fact sheet I had, it actually says that we could even ask for an abundance over the allotted amount and to provide those projects, and then that way have, they have enough to pick and choose from.
Well, lucky Jim's really been around the block on this. He used to be head of Collier's Storm Response Team, whatever that's properly called, huh?
So if that's council's pleasure, we will ask Margaret to hold on those projects until we get more information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Arlene? Great, thank you, Arlene. Carl?
One more thing. So council has been meeting on a weekly basis through the month of October. Staff wanted to know whether you wanted to continue that into November? Are we're good to go back to a regular schedule, or somewhere in between?
I would like to put my two cents in. I think it's reached a point where we're putting too much on the city staff. It's absolutely ridiculous, and in my thinking, with the storm that we've gone through, I think the city staff need a break. And we're just giving them more and more work, and so they're sitting here at meetings, and they're not getting out and doing what I hoped they would be doing, and that's looking out at the community and talking with people and things like that. So I would not appreciate doing that, just sticking with our regular schedule.
Okay, council?
Well, I, I think we have quite a bit of work to do, that's the problem. I mean, here, when I left home, I thought we would be here for like two or three hours, you know, to discuss these things. And as long as we have these projects going, I don't see how we're gonna do it within the regular schedule.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be inclined to agree, as someone who's spending a lot of time not working as hard as city staff, but really involved. So the conversation we had tonight in terms of, I found the conversation about all these projects extremely refreshing and thoughtful. I mean, it's kind of a workshop discussion. And we know we're gonna have, I think, something similar, maybe shorter, when the legislative, when we figure out our legislative agenda. And Carl, there may be a way to pare down how much staff we would need for just the meetings about the storm, as opposed to the regular meetings.
And remember, you got the Thanksgiving holiday coming up, you've got the Christmas holiday coming up, you know, give them a break.
I, I don't think this discussion, Steve, is about giving staff a break.
Well, I, I think it's time to give them a break, period.
Well...
You know what, what it takes to plan for a city council meeting? It takes a lot of work.
Excuse me, sir.
And we're asking to do that every single week.
Excuse me, sir, I'd ask a point...
Excuse me.
I'd ask a point of...
I'll have the floor.
I'd ask a point of order. No, go ahead and speak, please, in a different, in a different tone, in a different tone.
Fred, Mike?
I, I agree with Stephen. I, I think it is a, kind of, we are putting an extra tax on the employees, staff. And, and also with Thanksgiving coming up, maybe, you know, just 'cause we do have a lot going on right now, do the one extra meeting. You know, we have our normal meeting on the 1st, maybe the 8th, if we have stuff that we need to talk about, especially since things need to be done by the 15th. Maybe we have that one, but then I'd say, you know, get it back to normal after that.
Carl, what do you think?
I'll let the council...
Okay.
Fred?
Well, I, my, what I was gonna propose was, let's do the 8th, because we're, we're gonna have a discussion next on the 1st, but we'll probably spill over the 8th on the legislative priorities. And possibly, that may also help on the thing that Arlene just talked about.
And wrap up the priorities and get them in by the 15th.
And then hopefully, hopefully after that, we don't have to have any more unless something pops up, and we, but that could happen. But I'm not in favor of doing it all the time.
I agree with that.
No, yeah, I'd say do, go through the 8th and look at it that way.
Okay, 1, 8, 15.
Yeah, because, like I said, we got the holidays coming up, plus, you know, legislature's starting in January, so we may be going to Tallahassee on more than one occasion, and that's gonna tax staff also, so.
Right, right. And, and speaking of Tallahassee, are we, you know, is, I think I'd heard maybe the chamber wasn't planning a trip, or whatever. Whatever it is, whatever the process is, I hope the chamber wants to go to Tallahassee, but if they will, I mean, rather than pick a, a random day that works for the chamber, or whomever, I think the, I think the day needs to be, when, when can the council go? So, you know, Tiffany, no disrespect intended, but I think we need to look at it that way.
Yeah.
Rather than, okay, this is the day that works for the chamber, I think it needs to be a day that works for the council. So, you know, and any other group that might be planning trips up there.
I think the chamber was, they just weren't gonna take the normal means that they used to.
And I don't think they're gonna go this year, yeah, right.
Yeah, the normal means of transportation, I don't think they were gonna do that.
Right, right, right.
I think they're still going, they're just not gonna use their normal means of transportation.
Oh, they're back in the bus, aren't they?
I think, the way I heard it.
I went in a bus years ago.
And I don't think we're, you know, we're gonna have any more ribbon cuttings at the high school, so we don't need to worry about that being the same day as going to Tallahassee. But whoever, whatever, in terms of Tallahassee days, if we can look at what's actually convenient and will work for the seven of us up here, as opposed to, quite frankly, anybody else or anything else.
Well, I think the way they do it is, is they do it with a group of people going up. I know, like, for the Fire District, we have our set based on the Florida Association of Special District, or the, all Fire Districts are going up there. I think that's the way they choose it, it's just not a dart at a, at a calendar.
No, I, I...
They say, "Hey, we've got a list of, this week we're gonna..."
No, I just, for several years, such-and-such a group has planned the day to go to Tallahassee on this date. Hope you can be there.
I think we just deputized Greg to go up there.
I've done it, and I've walked those halls many a days.
That's what I'm saying, I'm kidding.
Great, okay, council, any message understood?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you right on these meetings, thing?
Yeah, I think the 8th is a, I think that's a great plan, and we can see how it goes.
Fantastic, okay, and now we're gonna move on to, Audrey, did you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. We're gonna move on to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Well, hello there, good evening.
Hello there, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Mr. Mayor.
Really mean we hold out to the end here.
Sorry about that.
I thought, it's okay, it's fine. I know, the whole discussion all the way through is quite informative, and it all involved the, the general topic of flooding, which I'm really glad that I had the opportunity to listen to all those various agenda items covering that issue. But, so two things, actually, there was a slide that Jim showed that I don't know if we can, I guess, I guess the projection is still, the entire presentation. Thank you, sir, thank you, it was around...
Stand time, yeah.
Yes, for the record, I should know this by now, I sit on the land just for an Astero. Patty Whitehead. This evening, representing the Responsible Growth Management, it was around solution 11, potentially, yeah, one, one, one more, one more, one more.
Well?
It was the slide with showing the homes by the river, the ones, the one on...
Solution between 9 and 10.
There you go, perfect, perfect. So my focus is on the implications of what's shown here. And, you know, it's a really simplified diagram, but if you, if you just look at this, can I walk over here, is that okay? He's on his way from, I suppose.
Sure, absolutely.
There's a pointer, and it'll find...
Oh, great, okay, great.
I'm sorry, I'm holding it.
Really technical, that's great, thank you.
You got two minutes left.
So the home right here on Phil, as you can, let's say this doesn't apply to just a single structure, but let's, let's say that's an entire development, right? And that's exactly what, this is how we do our development in Florida, right? These are the standards that we follow by the South Florida Water Management District. This is supposedly best management practices, but this in effect is the problem, alright? You have an entire community that's built on terraformed ground, that where the entire substrate has been erased, the natural substrate's been erased and replaced with this, you know, crushed lime rock fill. What are you doing? You're essentially, you know, throwing your drainage onto your neighbor. Now, they say, "Oh, well, you're supposed to contain your drainage within your property," but you have a 100-year storm, 25-year storm, you're inevitably shedding some of that onto your neighbor. It drains off, it goes somewhere, right? So the, you know, the pond structures and, and, and the retention basins can't retain, there's no, okay, here's my point. There's no recharge in this design. There's no recharge in this design, but in this design, there is recharge, alright? If a developer were to rethink how they do developments, and instead of doing them on terraformed substrate, artificial, you know, artificializing the way we build homes, not just the home itself, but the land underneath it, if we just go with, with Mother Nature and say, "We're going to build on stem walls or piers," and allow the original topography to remain, so there is in fact recharge, aren't we somewhat fixing the problem, right? That was one point. I know the, the light's coming on. I just want to make one more point, please allow me this time. It's very important about what I'm about to say, because it affects not just Benita, but Astero. As you're aware, with regards to the Lee County DRGR and the developments, the massive developments that are planning to put out there, and the speed at which they're, the velocity at which they're approving these developments, they're not pausing to give us the public information on this environmental enhancement and preservation overlay study, alright? They promised, the county commissioners promised a stakeholders' meeting in, I believe it was June. It got canceled like a week before the meeting, days before the meeting, in fact, we got some abrupt notice of cancellation. It never got rescheduled. What's going on there? We need to put that information into sunshine at this point. You need to dovetail that information with the studies that Jim's doing to come to the appropriate conclusions as to how you're going to solve drainage. They, they're controlling an entire piece of the puzzle, and we don't know what's going on. The time has come to reveal all of that data. So I hope that as a city council body, you can unearth all that and... So I hope that as a city council body, you can unearth all that and put pressure. I, I'm very, I'm very, I'll tell you forthwith, and I hope they're watching tonight, I'm very disappointed with our county commission, all right? They're not performing under some sunshine, they're making major decisions on developments, and they're not involving the stakeholders. And that's exactly what the study was supposed to be about, and it's not getting done, and I'm highly disappointed. So kudos for their acquisition of Edison Farms, but that doesn't solve the entire problem, gentlemen. We need to take the next step. Thank you. I hope you can really do some, a work product on that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Patty. Thank you very much. Other members of the public?
Here's Vince.
Good evening, my name is Vince Modarelli, and I am here representing the Rotary Club of Benita Springs, but my day job is Habitat for Humanity, and since Councilman Forbes mentioned affordable housing, I would let you know that, you know, I, I'm in total agreement that the, you can't trick the market. There's three ways to make housing affordable. One of them is to add supply, the other one is to pay people more, and the third one is to subsidize. And so there is a model, and there are models for subsidizing, so that you're not just giving away equity. We have a shared equity model at Habitat for Humanity, and, and we celebrate with our homeowners the day that they, they burn their mortgage. And so there's, there's a lot to that. Homeownership is not for everybody. Rental is, is a big option. Homeownership does have, though, that generational stability of shelter, that comes with shelter, and so we look forward. We're building 64 homes this year, and we have, when you hear of people, we don't have a bed for them tonight, but when you hear of people who are having challenges around homeownership, we are accepting applications at this point, and our selection committees are meeting, and we're placing families in homes. So I wanted to throw that commercial out there for you, and, and offer my assistance. I want to give you an update, though, tonight. I've been asked to give an update on, on some of the Irma response that the Rotary Club of Benita Springs has participated in. As of now, we've had over 1,700 hours of volunteer hours for Rotary Club of Benita Springs. About 4,000 to 5,000 volunteer hours have been coordinated by that club. A group called Disaster Aid USA trained us on mucking and gutting, we're now experts, but we're embarking on the process of operating a unit of Disaster Aid USA here in Benita, so that we can deploy as, as those people who, from West Virginia who did for us, we want to be able to pay that forward, now that we have that skill set. We're also participating in a University of Texas political science study that's focused on the coordination between government and non-governmental organizations, and what that University of Texas group is doing is going to compare that to the Harvey response as well. So we look forward to continued participation in that conversation, and then the outcomes of that for best practices. The Rotary Club is involved in midterm and long-term rebuilding. We're mobilizing volunteers, but it's much more difficult. I, I heard your, your conversation around evaluating some, and assessing some of the needs in the community, you know? That house is flooded, that's, that's an easy needs assessment. There's a house that's flooded, there, there was a house that was flooded two days ago, and, and, you know, there's nobody else here to help them, so we can help them. That's an easy needs assessment, that's a, and we learned how to do that. What's, what's more difficult is, is the next step, the mid, the mid and the long term. So we're finding that out, we're partnering with agencies like Love Inc., Samaritan's Purse, Habitat for Humanity, and many churches. This Friday, there's the Irma Goodness Concert, and I hope that you plan on attending from 5:00 to 9:00 PM in Riverside Park, and a way you can help is to find a Rotarian and buy a bunch of beer from them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vince. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, if I might just say, Vince, I just want to thank you for years of service in so many ways in Benita and Estero, and it's great to have you back again. So thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks to all of you. Enjoy it.
Thank you, Vince. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Marion Taylor. I've lived in Benita Springs, or Benita area, since 1965. My, my in-laws did, we, I moved over here in 76, and we built a home. We're on the Imperial River and Orr Road, right next to I-75. In fact, I-75 took part of our property when they put the road in. I lost my mother-in-law and my husband in '02, and my husband of 50 years. Several months after my husband's death, I received a letter from Water Management stating they were taking my property, either agreeable price or eminent domain. I felt as a government agency, when I got this letter, this is it. So we went, my son and I went looking for property. I invested $50,000, and a lot. I came back home, packed things away, and got a notice from Water Management that they weren't sure anymore. A couple of, three years later, I got another notice, they were going to reappraise my property. This time, I had hired a lawyer to help me handle this. They didn't even send me what the appraisal was, so my lawyer called them. They told him how much it was, but they weren't sure anymore. And then a couple of, three years later, I got another letter, they're going to appraise my property again. They weren't sure anymore. After eight years, I took them to court. I wanted to know one way or another. It cost me $47,000. In fact, I lost. Now, my property, when we bought it, the DRGR, was the north side of the Imperial River. With Water Management and all, I understood that we were going to be in, put into the floodway. I had a letter from the city of Benita stating, and it was in '07, that that was in error, that the printout was not right. I was in the commercial corridor. I looked at the paper recently, and I'm in the floodway anyway. My, as I say, I've been here since 1970s, '65 and on, through everything else, I have now inherited homes. I have three homes and a two-story barn on my property. They have never been flooded. We've had water come up in our yard a little, and go back from the Imperial River. They put the weir out on Benita Grand. It was, I understood to go through the Imperial River, I'd almost positive it is in the Imperial Creek, which is, of course, is a much smaller line of water. I understood they were going to dredge it from Benita Grand to I-75. That was never done. So the flame, property from Benita Beach Road to Terry Street and all is constantly flooded, and now so are we. All three of my homes and the barn were flooded. I can't even get in them. I'm suffering right now from mold and mildew, because I had to get my family pictures out. But, I honestly think, and the water can't go under I-75. You can't even hardly see the river when you stand on the overpass to I-75. You want me to show?
There you go, ma'am, I apologize. Please, continue.
Even on the Imperial Parkway, it's so congested under where the flow, river's supposed to flow, that it can't carry the water. It's no wonder Quinn and Downs and Edith and all of those streets were flooded. The water can go so far, and it backs up on both sides, because it can't go through. I, I don't know what I'm going to do as far as living. I'm 83 years old, and I can't take this. I can't get into my homes. My insurance, I haven't received a penny from homeowners or flood. I can't get anything done until I get the money. But I just wanted to check to see why the dredging wasn't done in order to carry the water properly, so that it doesn't go over both sides the way it is. I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Can I just add that comment to her? My name is Lucy Agate. I'm a CPA, I live in Benita Springs. Marion is homeless, she didn't, you weren't about the homeless. She's been homeless, her, her son are homeless. She's living with me, because I have a spare bedroom, and they've been there, you know, ever since the flood, so that's, that was her whole point. She's homeless, and there's no way that they can, they know what to do, you know, they just have three homes that have mold all the way to the ceiling. I mean, the water came up to waist-high in all, all three of their homes. She had a rental home that a friend of ours was renting from her. He left, he, he moved away. He went back to Atlanta to get a job with his previous boss from seven years ago, because he can't stay, he just got through renovating and fixing it up. So, you know, there's three homeless people right there, if you want to know where they're living. Her son's living in a camper, in, in the muck, in the mud, with a dog, and coming over to my house and showering every day. So that's where the homes, not just workers, it's like people like her that lived there all their life. So she's lived in fear of this ever since the last flood that almost came in her home. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. John West again. I've been down Orr Road, I've seen where that lady lives, and it was, her properties were underwater, and I sympathize with her completely. I was, I'm referring to the meeting you had, zoning meeting, the other day, and I want to comment on the deputy mayor's querying of the deviations that were being submitted for council's approval. And I want to say that I appreciated your line of questioning about those eight deviations, eight or nine deviations. The only thing that worried me was that your line of questioning was very good, but you should have extracted some concessions from them, I believe. And I'm sorry you didn't, but I would, I would have proposed some, particularly on stormwater management of that property. Mayor, you asked a question about the 1995 flood and what happened after that. There was a study done by Agnoli Barber Brandage, and they made certain suggestions, one of which was to open up that calvert under I-75 into Spring Creek. Nothing ever happened after that, and hence, we got more flooding. The map that has been produced, it does not include St. Carla's Estates, and Fred has explained why, but I think it should be in there, because if it is part of the future plan to open up that calvert again, it should show on the map. I'd like to speak again about the library. I spoke a couple of weeks ago about the fact that this is a 50,000-square-foot building, and we've just heard Jim saying about Lee County having done stuff for us, and we are suffering now the consequences of it. Well, they're doing the planning for this building, and I did not see any, anything there in the plan, and there was no comment about it, that they provided for suitable stormwater management of that property. Tin roofs can leach zinc, and we don't want zinc in our Imperial River. We already have a problem, because the river is impaired, and I believe we have a duty to the citizens of Benita to ensure that we do everything possible to stop pollution entering our river. And I don't think we're doing enough with that building to tell Lee County of our misgivings the stormwater drainage from that building. And I do hope that the city does something about that. Let them know, at least, look, we're worried about that, and we'd like to, for you to visit and take care of our concerns. Lastly, the meeting that you are going to have with South Florida Water Management District is going to be a closed meeting, I understand, at the request of South Florida Water Management District. And I'm disappointed that you, that they have dictated to us what kind of a meeting that is going to be. I don't think that they have the right to do that. We are paying them. We've got a lot of money invested in South Florida Water Management District, and I don't think that should be a closed meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. The first of many, John. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, Matt.